I asked you to get working out there with a can of pledge and the towels wiping off the ground.
We've done it both ways. Because we produce administration with you by the government account in the city that paid for it. Realized later. Prayer. So that's what happened.
Father, I thank you for this day. It is a gift from you. And Father, I thank you for the freedom to continue meeting this way and discussing our issues and concerns. I pray for those that are still fighting to protect this freedom. I just ask for your protection. And Father, I lift up the leaders of this country, of the state, of the county, and of the cities. Just ask for your wisdom in everything we do, Lord. Bless, glorify you. In Jesus' name.
Normal pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is July the 12th. We did have a forum. Commissioner Maxwell was not here. Okay, so we've got item one is to read and sign the minutes. I have the two sets of minutes. One is from June the 28th at nine o'clock and one from July the 7th at 1:15. Commissioner, do we have any comments or changes to either of those two sets of minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to accept those minutes as presented. Okay, motion made, taken, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well. And item number two, discuss, consider, propose, pending contracts and agreements. I don't have anything today to bring up that's not already on the agenda. I did sign the documents that we discussed last week about the yard sale, the precinct three yards of swarming, and submitted those down. Actually, the lady came by, picked them up, and sent you a copy of this. And then sent a copy of the present to...
Judge, you have the Rico contract?
Yep.
You're not going to do it under this?
I thought it was already under this. No?
I thought it was too, but I don't see it yet.
That's it? Okay, we'll do that.
Excuse me. I was actually asked to move that because she said that she did not receive the paperwork on that yet.
So this is for Rico for your copy and the elections?
For summer, yes.
Okay, okay, that's one.
That's correct.
And this is, what you have in front of you is the Rico contract, is she in?
I remember you saying that she wanted to move. Just keep the table until she comes back. All right. So anyway, the ticked out representative came by and picked up those documents. And I sent a copy to the file, to the... All right. Does anyone else have any proposed pending contracts and agreements that you've discussed, considered, or not on the agenda? All right, nothing else on that. Item number three is to discuss and consider accepting the 2022 Eastland County Process Centers and Children's Advocacy Center contract. Ms. Howard, go on that. How are you doing?
Good. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good evening again.
Yeah.
Well, we have thoroughly appreciated and appreciate the support that the county provides for the Eastland County Children's Advocacy Center. Before we look at the content, just kind of want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing for the past couple of months. And also let you know that the Crisis Center did not shut down. We did not stop services over all of the COVID pandemic, which is, of course, ongoing still. But we were still able to provide services. Our staff did an amazing job. We're trying to work with clients and families that come into our facilities. We did have a couple of periods where we had to work from home, but we were still doing everything as much as we could through the following. But over the past couple of months, our CAC has been extremely busy. Just to kind of let you know, summary, this is a piece of a summary that I give to our board of directors every time we meet. So for May, the CAC provided six forensic interviews for children served with glasses on. Twenty-three existing children, 58 total individuals. So that included a total of 26 being assisted in May. In June, we did three interviews, 25 existing children served, 61 individuals, and 26 total being assisted. So some of these are ongoing cases with things that we may serve from one month to the next. But the tools services that we provided, and I understand, I've got three full-time CAC staff that are doing this, so they stay quite busy in addition to just providing services to children. I'm going to tell a little bit about what they've been doing about the community. Two hundred and twenty-five individual services in May, and then 148 in June. So we are hopping with services that we are providing to children and families. One thing that's kind of, a couple of things that's kind of neat, our CAC staff is stepping up their community outreach efforts and going out and educating the public more now that we can get a little bit more from the public. Trying to keep my glasses on, sorry, I'll keep trying to clear them off. All three CAC staff presented at the recent Eastland Lions Club on June 29th. Very cool thing. Gina Camacho is our program director. She was asked to present about child recognizing, child abuse recognizing reporting to Eastland. She coordinated with Region 14 Education Service Center in Abilene. They said, well, we'd rather you not just do that for Eastland. We'd like to open it up for every that we serve. Region 14, which is a big educational area that serves a lot of counties. So they got to go present on June 17th, child abuse recognizing, trafficking awareness, and how to respond to that and to educators, administrators, paraprofessionals. That was very, very good. All the feedback from that, because we do surveys, looked very positive and we still think we'd really like to have you come up again. Our primary focus is Eastland County, but that was just a neat opportunity to get to present and try to reach out to some other areas and maybe have that trained to their staff. Our CAC staff also worked with, I cannot give you any identifying information, which is tough sometimes, but I'd like to tell you a little bit about the success stories. We were able to provide emergency financial assistance, transportation, and training for two child victims to get out of the area for safety. So that's just one of the things of all the services that we provide that is very meaningful and it's very impactful. I will say, our Child Advocacy Center staff, even our Adult Victim Services staff, they see the ugly as the ugly. We see, you know, people coming in very confused that they're worse, talking to abused children. It is a tough thing. So we appreciate the recognition of our services and your support. What we're asking for this year is the same that we asked for for last year. It is, so one contract in that way, you have that as part of your project. And we're asking for that to be considered, to continue with that. The services that you provide, the funds that you provide, helps us do some of those transportation and start paying for gas and getting those kids to get a meal. Sometimes we have families in our office for multiple hours at a time. Our grants don't let us have a meal, so that's going to get pizza or go get a meal for these families that are in our offices that haven't eaten well, that are stressed and retired. So those things do help. Your support is really, really appreciated. I do have Desiree with me, Desiree Stiles. She's been with our agency for four years now, but she was kind of, prior to this past year, she was our prevention educator. When a position came open in our CAC side, she's moved over to family advocate position. She's done a great job with that. She is also a training interviewer. So one of the things we did during what I would say is services slowdown time, there weren't quite as many direct services, so our staff got extremely trained. I now have three training coaches and interviewers. They can all provide interviews and all that, so we don't just have one that might have to be on call 24/7 all the time. I've got three different staff that can do that on that. They're cross-training with each other. And then one other thing, I will say, is Children's Advocacy Centers is now part of National Children's Advocacy. So we are meeting even higher standards. We have recently hired a therapist, Trinity Dempsey. I wanted to introduce her today, but she's a new client coming in for services this morning. She is currently an LMFT associate, but is getting a higher level of training, which is required for children, working with children with TMSBT, focused cognitive behavioral therapy. It is a certification way above what your standard licensed therapist has, and it is required by the National and also Children's Advocacy Centers of Texas. We felt the need to make sure that we have some other staff that could have that training, so Trinity's joining us. We're very excited about it. We have all those good clients ready to start speaking to her, so, you know, she's we're very excited to have Trinity join us. Did y'all have any questions for me?
The amount that the county funds, perhaps we also stay eligible for certain grants, would you?
Yes, it does. Certain grants require match. This past year, after the grants were funded, then they dropped the match requirements because of COVID, because some of the groups were not able to get out and do their local fundraisers. But we stay a year behind with that, so whatever we can handle towards the next fiscal year.
And the amount is $11,000, which is where it's been for a while since then.
Yes, sir.
Do you have questions, comments? Ms. Howard? Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter this agreement, and would you say until that we sign soon?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion, anything else, Ron? All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Okay. Ron, I thank you very much for what you do for the citizens and especially the children of Eastern County. I'm going to agree with one of the leaders. Well, let's see, I'm sorry to attest, would you attest these?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You have to sign those just for placekeeper, so you have to get the test to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for us to, you bet. Item number four is discuss, consider recommendations from fire departments to fund their own workers' comp. This was tabled at the June 28 meeting. Assistant City Manager Darwin Archer is here to make a presentation. Are you going, Ms. Archer?
Everybody's good.
I trust everybody got the packets, items that were from research. So I think I have just a few, if anybody needs. Judge?
Chief.
So just a quick synopsis of this, we went through and found who currently has work comp coverage, not funded by the county, and who doesn't. You can see there were two, Olden and Carbon, that do not have that coverage. And the estimated contributions, it's on the fifth row, T O F, estimated contribution is what these entities are currently paying. Work comp, of course, that all depends on, you know, somebody comes, somebody goes, any changes within, you know, as the year progresses, but those are the current numbers. I broke it down into a cost per person based on the entity. The actual contribution is based on estimated payroll, and I know all of their mostly volunteers, they have to give a amount, so I don't see what the cost per service would be if they were to pay for that, and that's how it breaks down. In the very far right column shows if the county were to increase each department's allocation by, and if I'm remembering correctly, you said about $15,000 for what it was costing for work comp. I took that number and just divided it among the departments, so it's $1,875. And then the over/under there on the very far right-hand side shows you, based on that, that fund back, if you were to do that, what the net would be to those entities. So for Cisco, the netback would be $617 over what we're currently paying for that, but for Eastland, it's $173 less than what they're currently paying if you were to fund that amount back. Does that make sense? Cover all but $173 of their costs that they're currently paying. And the same way, all the way across the board. I use estimates for Olden and for Carbon. I know that Olden has been working to get some more definitive costs, but just used an estimate based on another VFIS, which is down here in the Department. This VFIS, along with Rising Star, so I took... Better of the two, right? So the first column here, where it says provide coverage, yes or no, you mean that's the county providing coverage? No, no, that's the entity itself. Entity itself, so Cisco does. Cisco has workers' comp coverage. That covers our volunteers. So does Eastland, so does Ranger. Rising Star has their own policy. City of Gorman does as well, and Desdemona has their own VFIS. So right now, the ones that are, the county is paying for the Olden, Carbon? Currently, you're paying for everybody, but the two that don't have any other coverage are Olden and Carbon. So the idea here, let me just make sure this is what was presented to us a month ago. If we stop paying the workers' comp coverage for the fire departments that already have workers' comp coverage, we could take that money and use it for fire suppression, for Eastland, for the other communities, all of them, right? Divide that out, because entities want more money, and we're paying more for workers' comp. We anticipate paying more for workers' comp, but apparently only Olden and Carbon don't already have workers' comp. Is that it? I believe that's correct. Okay. I think the issue of the departments wanting an actual raise for their services is a separate issue from double covering and workers' compensation. Well, our idea was that we could afford to give more money to the fire departments if we weren't spending that money for workers' comp, because you already have workers' comp. That's where our discussion was going. Am I right?
Right.
Okay.
We can eliminate workers' comp, and actually, we're talking about doing 2,000 in the department.
So from what you've got from your research you've done here, the county could eliminate workers' comp coverage on Cisco, Eastland, Ranger, Rising Star, Gorman, and Desdemona. We would continue to have workers' comp coverage for Carbon and Olden, is that right? Well, I think the original discussion, or maybe the intent of the discussion, was that for those departments that don't currently have their own workers' comp, that they would get that and maintain that with the funds that you could fund back to those departments. We have, I know we have Olden here. Do we have anybody from Carbon Fire Department here? No? Okay.
Judge, I do have a quote for workers' comp for Olden.
Okay.
Our quote, VFRS or VFIS for workers' comp is $6,151 a year, just for our department.
$6,151?
Yes, sir. That was rated off our man hours personnel and at the rate of $25 an hour, or $25 an hour per person. And according to our insurance guy, that is the going rate now.
Okay.
So the only way I can see feasibly that Olden will be able to afford that is if we get the $27,000 that we were asking for the raise to, plus y'all take what y'all pay in workers' comp, and divide that eight ways, and then we'll have to just figure out how to still pay off the rest, because that's going to, our insurance costs a year to $11,458. But we're going to be paying almost $12,000 a year just in insurance for our station.
So that VFIS based on $25 an hour is not consistent with what municipalities are giving their rate at? Because they're not municipality, their rates are higher than...
And that's what, putting up the VFIS, maybe that's what they're doing, but I... That's what our insurance guy, David Hubbard, told me was, with us being a new customer to workers' comp, we're at a, put at the high threshold of workers' comp due to no history and, you know, some of the other departments that already have.
Right, yeah, insurance is based on your roaming average of about three years of what ours is based on.
So that's what we have to pay to start out with.
I've told them, I think this forgot, but Rising Star's VFIS, well, 19 members of her would be $3,000. Years of VFIS?
Yes, but Rising Star has had theirs for years with VFIS, where we have not. And they pay $25 an hour.
In insurance world, that'd be called preferred risk, years being unknown type risk, because they don't know, they wouldn't have history on it for about three years. That's what you actually have as far as premium experience.
That is, I had very lengthy discussion when Darwin told me that that was high, and I called her sales rep, and that's what he was telling me. We quoted it back and forth. That's why Star is as cheap as ours.
Okay, so Rising Star has VFIS, Desdemona has VFIS, Cisco and Eastland have separate comp coverage and VFIS? Yes, the TMLR. TML, okay. That's Cisco, Eastland, Ranger, and Gorman. They all have TMLs risk proof. So decision is yours? Well, I'm trying to get a dollar amount of what we would save if we didn't have, basically, we're providing, we, the city's entities are providing double coverage for workers' comp, which they're only going to pay one of the claims on that, so if we continue the workers' comp coverage of Olden and Carbon, do we have anybody here for Carbon, is that correct? Okay. And didn't provide coverage for Cisco, Eastland, Ranger, Rising Star, Gorman, and Desdemona, that might free up some money. I don't know how much that would free up. It would free up some, because that takes quite a few people off of the number of voluntary firefighters over covered. Right now, we're showing 136 in the county. Cisco has 19, Eastland has 16, Ranger has 20, Rising Star has 19, Gorman has 23, and Desdemona has 13. That would take a large group of people out of our crew. So one other question that I had in researching this, whenever the volunteers are listed on the county's coverage, are they listed as a Eastland County firefighter? Do y'all have a separate group for that? How are they being covered?
Yes, they're being covered as volunteer firefighters.
Right, for the entity of Eastland County?
Yes.
Because we contract with each one of the VFDs, that allows us to do that. Do y'all have any additional coverages, like is there an ADD policy on there? It's just working the straight workers' comp. And some years, not lately, but some years, the fire department's workers' comp is more than what we're paying out workers' comp for county employees, actual straight line county employees. I was wondering how that works if we're not actually... I know we've got Cisco, Eastland, and Ranger, Cisco manager, Ranger manager. JJ is not here, but... How is this going to work if the county stops coverage for those people that already have the coverage? It looks like it'll be a fairly seamless operation, but we better find out for sure before we take any action about that, about taking our workers' comp off to make sure that your workers' comp continues. I don't know, I need Ranger and Eastland and Gorman. Anybody here from Gorman? Okay. Rising Star, Josh? What would you like to know? Josh is not here yet, but what would you like to know? And I will get with the other city managers and... First, what we would say if we didn't have all those covered?
Yeah, but you're going to say, plan to do the 2,000 in the department and then still cover the 20, because you're going from 136 people to 26. You only have six volunteers?
I have not.
You got six listed on here.
Yeah, I've sent a message to Darwin on that, because he had me down six, but there's actually nine on our department, 10 is in account.
So that's my question, do you want to be taken off of that?
There's no way unless we get the funding to cover it, that Olden will be able to afford that type of payment, so we're...
What do you think about Carbon? I don't know.
Situation is, I haven't had much correspondence with their jobs.
Does Carbon use TML for their other coverage?
No. They do not.
They do not? Chief?
Not for their workers' comp, for their other coverage, yes, they do. But not for workers' comp.
So Carbon would have some kind of coverage, just, I'm just talking about the city of Carbon has TML coverage for other risks that they have?
I think their trucks and their equipment.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess we need to find out if the entities that we're providing this extra coverage for, you might say, if they're okay with us taking it off and funding their VFDs at a higher level, at the, is it 2,000 more?
2,000.
At a $2,000 extra level, if we took away our part of the workers' comp coverage, that's what we need to know. If we take away workers' comp coverage for Cisco, Eastland, Ranger, Rising Star, Gorman, and Desdemona, are those cities prepared for us to do that? Is that going to create any kind of issue for them? I don't want anybody to be, not covered, I don't want anybody to be without coverage out there, and then we have some kind of problem. According to the documentation, and we'll visit as management, but according to the documentation I received from each one of the entities, they all currently have volunteer firefighters specific listed over coverage on TMLR. Okay. Chief Williamson, is that what you think you've got? Is that, you think that's going to work okay?
In all due respect, when we agreed in June 16th meeting to committee this, there were going to be meetings where data was shared. I've been left out of all that. I believe Darwin's communicated with the city manager. I have not seen the document that you guys were just issued. I got no packet. I had no input or outlook because I've been left out. So I do have a lot of questions and some curiosities, so...
Well, you see my dilemma, I want to make sure that you guys are equipped with coverage for full time, whether it's coverage from city or coverage from county, I want all the VFDs to be covered.
Absolutely.
So let's make sure, I think maybe you need to have another meeting and make sure that the cities that already have TML or VFIS coverage are agreeable to us moving our coverage before we do that. And go through this process with the chiefs and the city managers of those cities and that's in your part.
We've had some discussions.
Okay.
And that very well happened. I've just been left out. I mean, I heard the statistic in the very introduction that it would cost $173 to us, so my curiosity, leave the city dropped us, and you guys covered us, how that would play in our favor. Mr. Darwin Archer may be very familiar with that, I'm not, so I don't have, I don't have the ability to choose an advantage or disadvantage at this point.
I want to make sure that the cities plan on continuing their workers' comp coverage for the VFDs. If they were thinking about not doing that, and we took everybody off too, then all of a sudden, we've got people that are working whatever catastrophe, and they don't have coverage, I don't want that to happen for sure.
One of the questions...
I, I had no input or output because I've been left out. So I do have a lot of questions and, and some curiosities, so.
Well, you see my, you see my dilemma, I want to make sure that you guys are equipped, covered to full time, whether it's covered from city or covered from county, I want all the VFDs to be covered.
Absolutely.
So let's make sure, I think maybe you need to have another meeting and make sure that the cities that already have TML or VFIS coverage are agreeable to us moving our coverage before we do that. And go through this process with the chiefs and the city managers of those cities and that city firefighters.
We, we've had negotiations. And they, and they very well have, I, I've just been left out. I mean, I heard the statistic in the very introduction that it would cost a hundred and seventy-three dollars to us, so. My curiosity, believe the city dropped us and you guys covered us, how, how that would play in our favor. Mr. Darwin Archer may be very familiar with that, I'm not, so I don't have, I don't have the ability to choose an advantage or disadvantage at this point.
I want to make sure that the cities plan on continuing their Workers' Comp coverage for the VFDs. If they were thinking about not doing that, and we took everybody off too, then all of a sudden, we've got people that are working whatever catastrophe and they don't have coverage. I don't want that to happen for sure.
One of the questions I brought forward to the city manager, and it may just be a delay in the response, but I hadn't got one yet, was if the members were covered outside of the city limits on that? And, you know, we had some small discussion here in the very beginning, but, but I have not received a response from our city manager currently. So, so I still am not able to determine the advantage or disadvantage because of the lack of data and information and participation in Workers' Comp.
TML may say that we only have coverage for Workers' Comp in your city limits or in your ETJ outside the city limits and not beyond that. I don't know, I don't deal with TML, so we deal with TAC and Blue Cross Blue Shield. I, I think we still need some more information about, are they agreeable to that? And if we're agreeable to spending the extra two thousand dollars because we're going to have the savings off our Workers' Comp that we're not having to pay more for, for all the two, for six VFDs?
So then your suggestion would be to remove Workers' Comp section coverage for the cities that already had it, but retain it for the ones that have.
Well, we'd have to, I think we're going to have to for Carbon.
I want to make sure I can relay that information to them.
Unless they, because he, Chief Richards has already tried to get something from VF.
VFIS?
I've had conversations.
Okay. And that's six thousand a year, which is, that's a whole lot more, that's almost half of what we spend to cover everybody. Of course, we have a larger pool.
So you would want to retain coverage on those two entities and then fund everybody as well?
Having a catastrophe out there, and I want to make sure that the city is agreeable, so they don't have any plans that we would know about, about maybe dropping Workers' Comp for.
That hasn't been in any discussion.
Okay.
They'll have another management, so.
And, and Gerald, anything at Ranger about Ranger city dropping Workers' Comp for fire departments?
None. Not at all.
Okay.
So there's just two then, aren't Judge and Oden?
Right.
Need to check on?
Well, he needs to check on one. Carbon, but we also need to get some kind of discussion with the city managers or the mayor, or at least one of the cities that we're currently providing, to make sure that they're okay if the city drops our Workers' Comp coverage for their city.
County does.
If the county does, yes.
Would you like that writing from them?
If you tell me, I'm pretty good with you telling me.
I just want to make sure that we bring you the information that you want.
Well, I think we need more communication maybe out there, I mean, Chief Williamson is pretty much in the know, except he didn't know about this, so we need to, maybe he and JJ need to work on that some more, maybe you need to help JJ, because he's even newer than Gerald Constance, which is still, he's still kind of new.
He's more than happy. Judge, it would be good if it right, so on down the line, something does happen and they don't play out like we're making.
That's true.
When you bring it back and say, hey, y'all signed off on it, y'all's good with it?
I think that would be an excellent idea, if we got something in writing saying that the cities are agreeable to the county eliminating our Workers' Comp coverage for their VFDs. There's nobody at Desmond except the fire chief down there, Chief Hart. And he could, he could put something writing saying that he's got the DFIS coverage. And it'd be the same way with Oden, except that we, the county will keep doing Oden until they get their own coverage at some point, if that's the direction they go.
Oden and Carbon?
And Carbon. Carbon's incorporated the city, so they've got TML for some parts, they might be able to hang Workers' Comp just like this.
They've got some sort of Workers' Comp, they have to for the water side.
They've got TML risk pool, TML RP to cover their Workers'.
Well, they have to have some sort of Workers' Comp for their water department, because they got enough.
The biggest waterfall.
Yeah.
Yep, right. I, I think if you'll get us answers to those questions and make sure they're agreeable to it, and I, I think Commissioner Wilson's got a good idea, put it right. The ones that want to come off of our double coverage, which is called double coverage, I think that'd be a great idea. Okay, so with that, can we have a motion to table this item again until Mr. Darwin, Mr. Darwin Archer comes back and tells us he's ready? Anything, anything else from fire department before we move forward with this? He's going to get some more information, everybody. All right, we have a motion to table. Two seconds. Motion on second, table, all in favor of the aye, aye as well. Okay, and that item is tabled until we get more information on it about what's the comp for the VFDs divided by the county. Thank y'all guys. You bet. That takes us to item number five. Sheriff Wager, you want to come talk to us about the nine-one-one update, dispatch update?
Sure, I'll keep it brief. I gave everybody stats on the dispatch. For June, we did eight hundred and fourteen calls for police, forty-nine for fire, one hundred and six for EMS, a hundred and thirteen for fire and EMS, and eighty-three others, for a total of eleven hundred and sixty-five for June. Brings the total call count for the year to seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. We have, yeah, we're halfway through, so I think we're running a little bit more than last year. But we're also have ordered the servers and all the networking and all that stuff for out there. That'll be delivered August fifth with an install directly after that. So I'm hoping to have all that installed by August fifteenth. We, of course, had the retirement for Pat, I think was the last time we spoke, she was coming up, she's now retired. We've got Amber Davis in there now, she's a twenty-two-year, doing really well, all our new girls are doing really well. Everything's going pretty smooth out there.
Don't say, don't, don't use the smooth word, knock on the wood.
Everybody in there knocking on some wood, but we're doing good at the moment. Do y'all have any questions about anything going on out there, want to see, or anything like that?
Questions, comments?
We also, I've ordered the cables and the software to be able to program all the radios ourselves in the county. For all these years, we have been tied to land communications for that. And, and it hasn't been a problem, because when we get a new radio, we usually order through him anyway, and he, he does it. But with the encryptions that we run, from time to time, it loses the, the encryption channel. It's designed to do that for like when there's no power to it for extended amount of time, it's, it's meant to lose that for security purposes. There's little internal batteries in there that are starting to wear out. And so we keep having to take, every entity is having to take over to Ablyn, or when he comes through, and, you know, we don't have time for the, when the radio goes down, the unit's down, you know, we got to have communication out there. So this will save every entity in the county a lot of trouble and heartache, then just come to, to dispatch or sheriff's department or whatever, have it reprogrammed right then and there. Also ordered the programming for the entire programs, because when we put the new towers in, which is still happening, it's going slower than any of us want it to. But with COVID, everything in the whole world is on backorder, and it includes radio stuff. So, but when those new towers go in, it will require a reprogramming of all the radios in the county. So, and the last time the county did that, it cost about thirteen grand to do that for the whole county. Well, now, we'll just take on the responsibility, programming all the entities, get them redoing, and it'll save, save the county about ten grand, so. That's what's going on out there.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments for Sheriff Wager about dispatch? All right, can we have a motion to accept this dispatch report as presented? Motion made and seconded, all in favor, it's aye, aye as well, all right, good job, thank you, Jason. Okay, item number six is updated on the county burn ban, of course, the burn ban is off. Should have asked the fire department before they left, what they thought about the burn, I didn't think about it, can't think about everything. Commissioners, are we getting any requests for putting the burn ban back on? Keep getting a little rain every once in a while. Sheriff, have you seen any wildfires out there, fires getting out of control?
No, not that I've heard.
Okay. All right, does anybody want to make a motion to put on the burn ban?
It was just raining pretty good again the other night, not before that.
What'd you say, you got four tenths of an inch around?
That was him.
Yeah.
Last night.
Last night.
He said he got an inch, Sarah.
No, I was saying, he said it rained hard Sunday morning.
She had an inch.
Okay, all right, so nobody wants to make a motion to put on the burn ban, so the burn ban remains off. Please call dispatch or your nearest fire department, let them know if you're going to do some kind of a controlled burn. Number seven is discuss, consider VOIP phone issues, yes please, Commissioner Raines.
Yeah, where are, where are we with all that?
We're all back here in the back row, back there. Who wants to, who wants to discuss?
I can give you an update, and we can take it from there.
Okay.
I definitely need these two. So.
They are not budgets.
We've had a challenge, but there's, there's some good news, there's some frustrating news, there's some.
And your name is Mr. Baker?
I'm Thomas, right.
Thank you.
What is your name, sir?
Wesley Sheridan, the representative of the spectrum.
Wesley Jared?
Sheridan.
Sheridan, okay, we want to get it on the record.
When, we had scheduled the auditor's office, because we had already previously made a change over there in district court. So we had those days set, and then we were going to scatter, and we were going to stagger, because honestly, we, we've learned, we've learned a lot with the county, I'll tell you. There's nineteen different entities inside the county, so we had had things staggered where AT&amp;T was going to cut some numbers at different days so we could go around and, and make everything a smooth transition. Well, in AT&amp;T fashion, they, they moved everything at one time, and so we were not prepared for that. I wish I could come in here and tell you something different. Commissioner Raines got the brunt of most of that, because when things cut, he got hit hard. All the commissioners' calls were going to Commissioner Raines.
That was good.
No, it wasn't, was it? But.
Come back if you could have that happen.
Here's the thing, here's the thing I want to ask, once you called me.
It got taken care of.
No, I'm just, one of the things that I want to point out, some of the things that we sold, when you called me, we had that fix, well, we, then they come back and did it again.
Yeah.
We had that fixed, what, within thirty minutes, an hour? So the ability in the past, when we had an issue with AT&amp;T, it can linger on for days, weeks, months. In thirty minutes, we had, and, and I want to thank Sarah, because Sarah has full portal access to when y'all call her, we can change it on the fly, and so we were able to do some things and show, and they shut down, Commissioner Raines, I mean, everything happened to Commissioner Raines, shut down his internet, and so we brought a device out on Thursday, had him back up. And so some of the things that we sold y'all, we've had to use in this transition, and it, and it was happening. I'm not sure which precincts, but some of the commissioners, whenever the lines went down and the phones weren't installed, they were getting calls on their cell phone. Well, once we got them off of Commissioner Raines, they were getting calls on their cell phone. So the things that we sold you are working, that, that's the good side. We have, Sarah, how many of the, of the nineteen, how many of the attendants have we set up now?
Um, I would say close to a little more than half.
So we, we actually go in and we're setting you up individually as auditing, you know, as the different departments, and everyone has their own auto attendant, and so we're setting those up inside of that. You got the brunt of some, because when, when all the numbers cut over here, they all went to you. And so Tessa has worked with us and, and done a great job, as now we've broken those out to go where they're supposed to go. We are having a fax issue at the jail, we're, we're going over there today, and so to, to finish some of that. So I'm going to say we're probably eighty percent through, unless y'all can tell us not, I'd like to get a checklist if we can funnel. We found numbers that didn't exist, and we found numbers that you have that AT&amp;T didn't know you had. And so there's going to be a few staggering effects for a while, we had a couple of issues to where that even though AT&amp;T has supported the numbers, they still, we have a couple of numbers that are doing the same thing yours were doing, and so, but we're, we're, I need a letter from the judge, kill my AT&amp;T Plexar account, so they can totally cancel it out, all the numbers are gone now, but there's a couple that have lingering effects. And we did the same thing, Tessa put a phone back on the desk for the, I guess it's, anybody from a landline. So let, let me explain a problem that may or may not happen to you.
Can I mention something real quick before you move on? And I was just told this morning, and Sarah, I think the girls were going to holler at you guys, but when the probation department puts someone on park, we pick it up thinking, okay, one of our staff picked it up, but it's a client waiting to talk to one of the probation officers. So when they park them, we push the park button, and it's your client.
So, yes, that was happening courthouse wise, uh, why, sorry. I did get all the parks made for every department, it's just a matter of me going back in there now and assigning them to y'all's phone so that there is not just like a system-wide park and anyone can pick up the phone.
Okay, gotcha.
So that is being taken care of, and I just haven't made it that far yet.
So we are individually setting up nineteen.
As, as me calling somebody and it shows up that District Attorney's Office is calling me, I'm not the county judge's office. I don't know if that's been resolved.
So that's again, when they dumped everything on us, we had to, we had to make sure calls came in and calls could go out. So we are going in individually now to each department based on phone number and setting up your caller ID to show you.
Because when do you think we'll actually get finished with this process? This transitional process, when will it be done?
We're, ninety-nine percent of it should be done this week, I have to depend on it, yes. In, in fact, over the next couple of days, the majority, like the caller ID issues, those are things, if you can, if I can get a list of little things that maybe we thought are fixed or not, but the caller ID, we have control over that, we can go in and fix that. Setting up the nineteen individual departments, we have control of that now, we, we're working on that with each department. The fax issue, we're going to go see what's going on, we may have to run, and we have found some bad, bad lines that have been around a while on the CAT five, so we're, we've replaced some of those. We're down to just little, little items, we went out and, and I guess we went to Rising Star and got the phone in. We have the Texas Ranger, we have to put the phone in still downstairs, so we're almost there, but our goal is to be complete this week, I mean, that's our.
Kathy, are we still getting issues where we're calling out and our caller ID is somebody else besides county judge's office?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so that's been resolved.
Well, it, it could be based on some departments, as Sarah is going through and still setting those up.
Depending on what department we call, it can show differently than somebody else. If I call the jail, it may show county judge, if I call Kathy's office, it might show.
No, no, if you, if you call, it's always going to say county judge, but let's say audit calls, it might show, until we go in and set up each department, their caller ID might show something.
And for the most part, I have, I'm, I think all of them fixed, I worked on it that night that I was awake, I was made aware of the problem.
You were awake?
I was going to say, she fixed ours pretty quick.
No, and, and that's the thing I want y'all to know, these changes that when you call us and we're able to fix them, that would not have happened on what we had before. I mean, it could take weeks or, or months to get a, a simple change, but we have the ability on the fly to fix these things and the majority of these things. So that's what's nice. We also found there's three different networks in the, in the court, I thought Carrie took care of everything, so, but there's three different networks in the county that we, we've worked through. Perry basically lived here for, for two weeks, so we're almost there, I mean, we really are almost there. Just a few lingering things that we have to let AT&amp;T clear out some things, but as far as the phones, everything's been delivered, but one phone, we have some work to do with, with the sheriff and, and to get some things that they're wanting, but, I mean, for the most part, unless you can tell us differently, we're almost.
Let me ask, David Cherry is our L-DOT, our chief protection officer for L-DOT, what about your phone system as we've talked about now? Do you have any issues?
We still can't fax, as, and I think we could for a few days, and then it went away.
Okay, we'll run by there today.
So that, that's an issue. And then my, my biggest issue is the automated system, I think, I don't, I don't think that's the term you used, but the automated answering. When a call comes in after hours, I mean, we, we have roughly a thousand people on probation. We, we deal with a lot of after-hour incoming calls, people call and say, hey, I've changed my phone number, I've changed my address, I got a new job, whatever. And we've been told that all of those incoming calls have to be routed to one voicemail.
So.
So, hold on, let me, let me, so how many extensions do you have, what do you want, rather than?
I want the automated system when it's answered after hours, we typically, of course, I've only got one, one lady that answers the phone for this many people, but typically, after hours, when it says, I want them to be able to push, you know, whatever, for David Cherry, hit extension twelve or whatever, and it goes to my voicemail instead of one general voicemail, because there's days that we'll have twenty or thirty voicemails, and I don't have the staff, I've reduced my staff by thirty percent in the last year, and I don't have the staff for somebody to, for Carol to have to listen to thirty voicemails and then push them out to who they go to.
And if you're fine, I actually worked with the juvenile probation in getting that set up. And if you're, um, I actually worked with the juvenile probation in getting that set up, um, and they were able to beat up, so I was-
So it can be done?
Yeah, I was emailing with Nathan, um, last Friday.
Okay.
And he said he wants it set up exactly like theirs, so I was gonna work on that today.
Well, hold on, what do you want?
Well, that, that's, I, I want it when an incoming call after hours, where that person calling can get their probation officer and not a general-
Okay, so, so how many do you have?
Wait a minute, you're not letting him finish and tell him what you want? What do you want, Dave? What do you want him to tell Mr. Baker exactly what you want?
That's basically, I want, I want to be able, for those calls, for, you know, each-
No, I, I know what you're saying, how many do you have, probation officers?
I've got five officers, myself and a support staff.
So we want to set up an auto attendant for you that has all five listed, press one for so-and-so, two for thir-
It would be seven listed.
Okay, so seven. So, do they all have a phone?
The juvenile probation, that's how you want it.
Yeah, but originally, we were told it all had to go into one voicemail, right?
And that was my guy, on my-
Okay, I mean, as long as that can be, I just don't want my support staff to have to listen to thirty voicemails every morning and dippy them up.
So let me ask you a question.
When you got the training last week, when you and Linda got the training last week, and you're able to set up different things, does David need to do some of that on his end?
I don't believe so. I'm not really sure I understand the, the responsibilities of these, um, this company, these people versus the internal responsibilities we're gonna have, but the training that I got was basically, um, in the admin module of the, the tool, which I was able to set up our own auto attendant for this office. Um, so I don't know going forward, as far as the county, do we want somebody internally that has that option to monitor that, to change it? Or is this something we're gonna call y'all for every time that we need something?
But the training, the training was real good, though, last week.
It was awesome, it was-
Either or. We want to give you the ability, can I, can I come back to you for just a second? Okay, so do each one of your guys have their own phone?
Yes.
Okay, so would they like to have that, rather than have to divvy out, would they like to have it converted to, do they all have smartphones?
Yes and no. I know your next question, and no.
Okay, so you don't want it converted to an email away file where it can be played for them, and they, all they have to do is play it on their, their smartphone?
Or their email.
Or their email.
Ti- typically, the short answer is, unless it's an emergency, we try not to deal with calls after hours, because the volume is just so overwhelming.
Okay. So, so answer, yes, we can set up an attendant, each one can, so that's the neat thing, and we're learning, Judge, as we go. Different departments have different needs, and so you have the ability to have an auto attendant set up as your number comes in, and set it up how you want to set it up?
And then my, my only other question is the page button, is it-
Yeah, I hit pages, I'll talk to everybody here on the X of the jail.
Countywide, or can that be broke out by?
So, so I'm gonna say, Sarah, yes, we can set up two, Kathy?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. I'd have to go back and check.
So, so I'm gonna say ninety percent, yes, we can have an all page, if you want to do an all page, and then we should be able to have a, your own group page. It just requires a button that we preprogrammed.
The only time we do an all page would be some kind of like evacuation, emergency, something, you know, even, and we do, from this office, we send out group emails and group texts and whatever, to tell people that, you know, we're leaving, the courthouse won't be open today because of bad weather, whatever, and that would typically happen off, off hours, so I don't know that we would need an all page.
I would love to have the ability to all page.
You know, I can see what works, yeah.
Yeah, just in case I have something that happens.
For like an emergency?
Whatever, whatever, but, but I'd also like the ability to just page-
Your inner office.
Our, our facility.
We'll let you know something, if not today, you know, tomorrow, if, I, I, but I believe we can, I believe we can do an all page, and I believe we'll be able to, to regroup it.
We should, we should be able to restrict you about the people that can all page, strictly just used for emergencies and things like that.
TJ, what about agro life extension, voice-over I P phone thing, just what, how's it working over there?
I don't know, on and off, but beyond that, I don't know.
You're kind of, TJ's like me, he's kind of old school.
Cora, Cora, I think has got ours figured out, and I think we're, I think we're good.
Does she do, does she do that training? Did Cora do that training, like?
She was, she was gone.
Okay.
Can I come back to, to, so how did you find the portal, being able to work around in the portal and do what you want to do?
I thought it was very easy, uh, very intuitive, I mean, it was, um, once you've gone, gotten the training that's required, um, I think setting up the, the auto attendants is, is pretty straightforward.
Okay. So you feel good walking, working around in that? So, so we want to be, what we would like to be for you, is that when Commissioner Raines call me, I can, I can operate on the fly. I would like for you to be able to do what you want to do and how comfortable you are doing what you want to do, that's the beauty of what we've done, is we give you whatever control you want, whatever control sheriff you want, and then we're here to fill in the gaps, to assist you whenever you need something, and so that's the- And, and like I said, get these damn calls off my phone, to be able to do that, you know, I mean, so-
How you remember my message?
Well, now, here's an issue that we have had, and I've visited with Perry and Sarah on it, and they, I'd already fixed it, because there's just been in and out, the intercom. Because when somebody intercoms, like, they intercom my back desk the other day, and it beep beeps, but we're so busy sometimes, we don't hear them beep beep.
Okay.
And they can listen to your conversation.
Right.
And that doesn't need to be so, especially in law enforcement, if I'm sitting in there dealing with an H R with my personnel.
Right.
They don't need to be hearing what I'm saying to them. There's got to be some privacy issues there. That needs to be done away with. I mean, David don't need to be sitting in there.
Exactly, I mean, obviously, with a lot of what we deal with is complicated.
You gotta be able to accept it or not, other than it just-
Well, it doesn't need to automatically be listened to.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Now, the page, you can hear, but you can't respond, and they can't hear either, so.
We'll definitely find out what the fix is for that.
That has to be fixed.
Are y'all making notes about all this, or you need a change? Where'd you go, Sarah?
And I think that is countywide.
Yes, yeah, I think you're right.
And, ma'am, uh, what we discussed on the all page is that really the only people that need to all page is your office and coming out of law enforcement and security. Um, otherwise, I don't think the other offices need to all page.
Yeah, I don't really care about the district attorney's calendar.
Yeah, I know. I hope that the Kmart was good.
Yeah, I missed the Kmart.
Oh, you did.
My only deal is, if you figured out my internet.
We talked about that on the way here.
We're just gonna, so AT&T killed it, or whoever was billing you for that?
Yeah.
We're just reordering it.
Okay.
So. We, so what we did is we took our ModNet with device out there, so.
Yeah, they put a cellphone bridge in. It, well, I mean, it works fine, ain't no big deal for me, but I know y'all ain't gonna leave it sitting on my desk forever, so.
Not till you're fixed. It'll be there till you're happy.
Does anybody know if Commissioner Knoxville, Precinct One, is having issues with his phone?
Well, Reddick, Reddick called him, and I answered.
Where is he, the Reddick?
He's Precinct One here in Eastland.
Okay.
But you fixed it.
Okay, okay.
I mean, as far as I know, you fixed it. I haven't got any phone calls since Reddick called and talked to him, and I answered.
Okay. Well, you got a good phone voice.
Good, evidently.
It's got a face made for radio, too.
Whoa, that's on the record, on the record.
So I just want to make sure, Sarah, what are the outstanding items that, that, where we're, because you have to sign a completion when we're complete. So we want to make sure that I've got a listing of everything that's, that's left outstanding.
Um, I still wanted to know about the cordlesses and air pieces for some of the departments that were wanting those.
Oh, I've got a list going, I haven't heard back from everybody, but I will get that to you hopefully today.
Okay.
So, so hold on, I, that's kind of secondary scope, we'll, we'll get those, but I want to know what's in the scope of what, what was ordered.
Um, I have the sheriff's fax.
Okay, we're going there today.
Parks for all the departments.
Okay.
Um, I still needed to get with the DA's office, I haven't had a chance to talk to them about how they left their, um, auto attendant set up. Um, I know I need to get a directory, directory still loaded into the phones for, um, obviously, I can't list every department, um, as a button, because there's too many. Um, and then I have, I'm gonna work with Officer, uh, sorry, the sheriff with his, uh, have his own site for the call histories of, um, pagings for just certain departments, and then taking off, do we want to take off the intercom completely? For everyone, like, system-wise, or certain departments?
I don't know why we'd need that, except just for Jason and, and this office, if we need to push that information about evacuation.
No, this is the intercom, this is the intercom.
Yeah, I think every office wants their own.
Intercom.
Oh, yeah, we got the, we have it in office.
I want to be able to intercom somebody.
Just know that they're automatically listening.
We don't want to automatically listen, because as soon as they intercom, if you don't, if you don't answer it, it's listening to what's going on.
Yeah.
So I don't know off the top of my head if we can set up an answering function, because that's basically just interextension dialing at that point, or dial an extension and call it rather than page it, or intercom it. Um, so I think worst case, we just remove the intercom functionality for anybody with privacy issues, and then he'll just have to answer the phone. You can still do the three-digit dial, you know, to dial a full, full phone number, but someone have to answer for it to be two-way communication.
Wait a minute, did you say you can still use the three-digit dialing or not use?
Yes, you still can.
Because we, we've been doing that for years, we've been using the two-digit dialing.
Probably have to use three, just based on the number.
And three is, I mean, yeah.
So we pull the intercom off and just three-digit dial, and then you have to accept that call?
Yes, exactly.
That might be the easier option, leave paging separately.
And that would leave a voicemail, that could leave a voicemail for that.
True, yeah, right, right.
We turned our voicemails off.
That's what happened.
We don't want it.
And then I have the dot probation, it's a voicemail, auto attendant, and fax is not working.
Okay, so we've got the fax, it's down, and the adult probation, the fax is down at the S O, anybody else in here lose a fax? Kathy, our fax is working okay, because we sent a fax out last week to somebody. Faxes are old school now, but we do have to do those on occasion for law enforcement, so.
So these are all programming things? Uh, someone is gonna have, if, if we can get into, the phone is downstairs, right, where's the phone for the ranger?
In the basement.
But is it, it's not set up yet, though, is it?
No, it's set there.
We, we can't get in?
Well, and I think we don't have the, um, internet drop yet, Carrie hasn't been there.
We were gonna, we have a Wi-Fi download that it will come.
Oh, okay, okay.
We just need in to set it up, so.
Can you get in there? Okay.
So, it was more challenging probably than, you know, we've had some, we went in and we didn't have any problems, but, but everything's been able to be overcome, and I, you know, I hope you feel like we've been reachable, if you've needed us, someone is, if not talked immediately, was getting back with people, and, and so, uh, I mean, I hope y'all feel that we've at least done that part, that no matter where we're at, you can find us, and so I think.
At some point, we'll have to, uh, have authority to remove the Plexar, to turn the Plexar system off.
I need that, like ASAP, it's ready to turn off. We've, we've got the numbers ported, so I need a letter stating.
If we turn off Plexar right now, will that cause any problem with what we've got? I still have my old phone on my desk as a backup phone, I hate to do away with all this stuff like this.
So, so from a billing perspective, we need to turn it off. Uh, the, it's kind of funny, we need to take that step so they can kill it.
Does anybody else still use their old system? Yes, ma'am?
I do have a, I need a question about that, because every once in a while, my old phone is still sitting there, every once in a while, it'll ring.
Yes, and, and until, until we turn it off, that'll continue to happen.
Okay.
So what's happening-
Just calling the twelve sixty-three number?
So, so here, here's what's happening, Judge, this product, this product, and we had this happen with, whenever we first did, did this. AT&T, even though they've taken the numbers away, they've not physically turned that off, and, and so if you're calling from a landline, not a cellphone, but a landline, it can still be routed, AT&T, and the, and their routing can still route to that old network. It, it, it'll continue until we physically turn it off.
So when we physically turn it off, that should then move from the old network into the V O I P network?
It, it has nowhere to go.
We don't want to miss any calls, and, so.
But we're, we're kind of like, until we turn it off, that can still happen.
Okay, so do we, Reddick, do we need to have authority now to do the Plexar turn off?
I, I don't think Commissioners Court needs to grant authority, but yes, we need to get a letter, because Commissioners Court's already approved switching to the VoIP system.
Okay, so we need to have a letter from our office saying that we need to-
I'm pretty sure mine's not been turned off, too.
We're gonna find you wherever you're at with Plexar, okay.
In fact, I told them if, if everything failed, go to you.
Eh, I can believe that.
No, I wouldn't do that, because you know how to find me now.
Yeah, I've got both of your phones on, as a matter of fact, and my, both cellphones.
Jason's got a tail on you, he knows where you are.
They don't even know where I'm at, they need to know where Sarah's at. I can't fix anything, Sarah's the one that can fix everything, so.
Anyone else have any V O I P issues that we can discuss with the V I O P providers?
So my goal would be to have everything complete Wednesday, have final documents to you on Wednesday.
Okay.
So that, we're gonna try real hard to get that done.
Okay.
At that point.
And, Reddick, you know who to send the letter to for the Plexar?
To send it to you.
Okay, okay.
Do y'all have a scoring system? On y'all's company or whatever. I was gonna ask you what y'all score y'all at. One through ten, one's good, ten's bad.
On how good we are? Sarah's a ten.
She's a ten.
I'm a seven, I'm a five.
Perry's good, too.
We always get scores.
The sheriff is, he's- I don't know, I saw a hand up with five on it, is that what it was?
Uh, no, I was gonna interject and say that I think there were other factors outside of global data on this one, uh, our company is part of it. Um, so judge him less harshly than-
Oh, no, you know what? We get better. I, I'll take, I'll take a five if I've learned something, and we make it better for somebody else, and so with all the factors that have happened, I'm the CEO of the company, so I take everything, okay, but we've learned, and I'm gonna tell you that a lot of things that, that if, if we had to do again, I still don't control AT&T, and it, and no matter how much I would have prepared, had they not shut us off and we'd have had our stages like we initially had hoped for, you know, it was a, a, a different thing. Perry went home on a Thursday night and was back here on a, after working, you know, till seven, was back here at eight o'clock in the morning and driving in from San Antonio. So Perry has been tremendous, and Sarah both, you know, but here's the thing, it doesn't stop here, just because we get you installed. Commissioner Raines, if you were to call me at nine o'clock, or, or Sheriff, call us at nine o'clock, Sarah has access to the portals, okay, so it doesn't quit here. I mean, we know you're, we accept your twenty-four hour service, okay, that's just part of it. I gotta pay Sarah more, but that's up to me to, to do that, but I, I, I think this was overall, yes, we had challenges, but it also showed us what this system can do, and if you're in an emergency, what can happen. And so everything we got to put in place was what we sold you, and everything that we did is, is the technology that where we're moving to. So when I look at that, we got to prove our own worth at what, what we did and the challenges that were out there. Sometimes you just, when you're in telecom, and, and again, I was telling Commissioner Raines, this is sixty years of programming inside of what you had with AT&T, and when you move from that, you just gotta know there's gonna be some things, but overall, I, I think it went, I think it's going okay when you've got nineteen companies inside of one. Now, I didn't, now that's where I'm, I'll tell you, I made my mistake, not realizing there's nineteen entities inside this county, because this is the first county we've done that we've had to set up nineteen different entities, and so, you know, there's three or four or whatever, we, I mean, we've got, this is, this is a hundred and, more than a hundred. Oh, this is, this is a bigger county, so with that being said, a little more discovery maybe, you know, rather than while we're in it. So, but other than that, I'd say the whole install has been a seven, even with challenges, to be honest with you, so, but thank you. And feel free, I mean, your, your, your people have done a great job reaching out to us when they needed something, and-
You haven't hesitated reaching out to us?
No, no problem.
But, but not even Commissioner Raines, I mean, we, we worked with you, and, and I don't know all the, Tessa's been great to work with, and Loretta's been great to work with, so overall, you have really good people that, that know what they need, and so we're almost there on, on the rest of it. So by Wednesday's my plan, to have everything done, and then you and I can sit and talk over, over the phone, and then if, if, you know, we're there, then we'll do final docs for that, but it's, it's not going away. I mean, the service is not gonna go away just because we've moved on, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else, anyone?
You just treat each office fairly, that's all we ask.
Well, Commissioner Raines, I gotta tell you.
Well, exactly.
He's at the top of the list. All right, thank you.
He's special.
Thank you, thank you all. Can we have a motion to take a short break?
Yes.
Motion made in secret for a short recess, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
James called me. Nah, I wasn't too mad at it, I found the code, right, if I could get my messages off, right, I didn't know the damn.
Well, she put mine in there, and I said, boy, you leave, write me a code, man, on this, give me that.
Yeah, Kathy gave it to me, but it wasn't for everything, you know, I guess it's just a-
Four, ten, seventy-eight?
I think that's what it is, either that or eleven seventy-eight, or something like that, I don't remember what the code was. After that, I could listen to my messages, I had. I still hadn't put- After that, I could listen to my messages I had. I still hadn't put a... A message in there.
Yeah, I haven't either.
I haven't either. I don't know if I am. Maybe they don't...
Aye.
Aye as well. Okay, we're back in session, and we're now at item number eight. Discuss, consider annual road reports from precinct three. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, sir. Since I was late with mine, I guess I'm going to turn mine in today.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
And Kathy, you have a copy of it?
I did not.
Okay.
I sent it on email.
I get it. I'll let you have that if you'll let me have a copy back.
Okay.
Could I get a copy, please, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion then to accept the annual road report from precinct three?
I'll make it. I'll say.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. And that is accepted, and now I have all four of them. And Kathy, if you'll give me back the certified copy so I take it to the grand jury. Whenever you get that done, please, ma'am. Thank you. I hope you get your writing done. And now on to number nine, report on the salary grievance committee. Ms. Jentho.
Yes, the committee is not formed. We have two accepted, five waiting on second letters that was sent out, four declined, and one returned with undeliverable address. So again, the committee is not formed.
Do we need to possibly draw some more names?
There is no more to draw.
No more names to draw for the grand jury. That's right.
Yeah, because they held him over another term because of the COVID stuff, so.
Okay. Well, can we have a motion then to report, to accept the report on the salary grievance committee?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. It is unanimous. Item number 10 is to discuss, consider fiscal year 2022 employee health coverage plan options and select plans. Ms. Keith?
Yes, and Dawn Brinson is here to...
Ms. Brinson, how are you doing?
Explain our options.
Yeah, more and more?
Yes, yes, we do.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have big paper. You may have versions of this smaller, but I find that bigger fonts are better.
How do you choose?
Thank you, because they do.
Yeah, they're way small, so I brought it like this as well. Pass around.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Have it hard, man.
We may have pulled our office.
You what?
We may have pulled our office.
All right. So two line items of coverage came in with an increase, and the other benefits came in with no change. So I think from just a global perspective, some of the decision-making will be easy. But the big decision is always our health coverage. The medical plan renewal from TAC came in at 11.5% increase over the current pricing. That is the largest increase we've had in the last four years at least, in looking back at your history.
And that's reflected in which column, right here, the renewal column?
Yes, the renewal at 11.5% increase with TAC. And then we have some alternates for you to consider, one that we like more than the other. To give you a sense, though, of your loss ratio, and when I say loss ratio, I mean to compare the premiums you've paid in to TAC versus the claims they've paid out. And it's not on this paperwork, but I'm just going to tell you that we have been running at 198% loss ratio. For every dollar that you've paid in premiums to the health coverage, they've paid out $1.98 in claims. And this year, we have 15 large claimants that we've been tracking with large amounts paid out. So that is really the contributing factor for the most part to the 11.5% medical renewal. So then we began to ask the question, what alternatives could we consider that might bring that down? And so there's the current plans, there's two medical plans offered, and then the renewal with no plan changes is next. And then the third, which I tried to make green, which is harder to read, is alternate one, where we are looking at some plan design modifications on your second plan. So I want to talk with you about that option today. So just to acclimate you to this very full page, I want you to see in the bottom left, we have labeled census. And as you can see, we currently have 19 people plus their dependents participating in the high deductible Health Savings Account Qualified Plan. And the majority of your employees, 75 of those, actually participate in the PPO plan. And it's probably popular because it has copays for office visits and prescription drugs and things like that. So we have a total of 94 employees covered. Five of those cover spouse, 12 cover one child, and nine cover children. Currently, we have nobody who covers full family in either of your medical plans. Now, the way the county is funding, you pay 100% of both plans for employee only. The dependent cost is charged based on the different plans, so your employees pay the full dependent cost. But if somebody elects the HSA qualified plan, then you are also making a $100 per month contribution to that employee's health savings account.
Sir.
A health savings account, just as a reminder to you, is not use it or lose it.
Motion made, seconded. Go back into session. All in favor, say aye.
When the money goes in, whether it's their money or your deposit as a county, either way, it becomes their money. It's their bank account for them to manage as they see fit.
We don't do a $100 month. We do two $500 deals.
Oh, you do? Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. So on the bottom yellow line here, you can see that our current annual budget is $898,000. Now, that's the total invoice. That's 70, almost $75,000 per month for both plans. If we were to accept the TAC renewal at 11.5%, that would be an increase in the total invoice of $103,000. You see where that, where I'm getting that number in the yellow highlight? The alternative plan would drop the increase to 9.3% or $83,000 more per year. And then there's alternate two, which would be a 6.82% increase or a difference of $61,000. So we've bolded the differences, and there are no changes. So we went to TAC and asked if we could consider buying a higher deductible than $5,000 for our first plan. But they don't yet offer a higher deductible on that plan. But they do offer a higher deductible on the second plan we offer. So going from $2,500 to $3,000 would be the option shown in alternate one. You see where it's bolded there, just below that purple line from $2,500 to $3,000? And then the last column would take your deductible from $2,500 to $3,500.
Okay, so just make sure we're clearing this. Alternative one increases our deductible by $500.
Correct.
Okay. Alternative two increases the deductible by $1,000.
Correct.
In your out-of-pocket goes up as well.
Mm-hmm. From $6,850 to $71,500 or $81,500. And those also are bolded. Any other questions on this page? Okay. Then this is a continuation of those same four columns. These are not more options. We just couldn't fit it all on one page. So now, the purple line shows the portion that the county actually funds. So the yellow line told us our total invoice amounts. The purple line shows us the county's portion of the health coverage contribution we make. So currently, the county is funding $806,000 per year. If you accepted the renewal with no plan changes, the county would go $92,000 more for $898 total. Alternate one would be $75,000 more, and alternate two, $55,000. The other items I'm showing below that purple line is that $1,200 per year contribution for the 16, I think I said 16, 19 people that are in the HSA qualified plan. If there were no changes or shifts, that's $19,000 per year contribution into those bank accounts. In addition to making the Health Savings Account contribution, we maintain a health reimbursement arrangement, which effectively is the way we have of distinguishing the amount of insurance we want to buy from TAC, but we want our employees to have lower deductibles. But we don't want to pay the high premiums to TAC for the privilege. So we self-insure a part of the deductible to buy it down for the employees to encounter less out-of-pocket. In each of the plans, the blue numbers that I have on this page illustrate the amounts that the county is funding on the back end of each of those deductibles, not only for employees but for dependent coverage as well. You pay an administrator by the name of BenefitBucks, and for purposes of just full transparency, I own BenefitBucks and Brinson Benefits as well. And so you pay an administrator to review those claims, to make sure that there are appropriate reimbursements being made to employees. And your annualized claims are running at about $21,668. So if we were to contemplate alternate one and increasing the deductible in that second plan, then what we've done here with your health reimbursement arrangement is suggested that you probably want to offset that additional difference in deductible and increase your health reimbursement arrangement to $27,500. Likewise, if you were to consider alternate two, then we might recommend that you increase the health reimbursement arrangement to $32,500. The dependent cost is charged based on the different plans. So your employees pay the full dependent cost. But if somebody elects the HSA qualified plan, then you are also making a one hundred dollar per month contribution to that employee's health savings account. A health savings account, just as a reminder to you, is not use it or lose it. When the money goes in, whether it's their money or your deposit, as a county, either way, it becomes their money, it's their bank account for them to manage as they see fit.
We don't do a hundred dollar month here. We do two five hundred dollar deals.
Oh, you do, okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. So, on the bottom yellow line here, you can see that our current annual budget is eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Now, that's the total invoice. That's seventy, almost seventy-five thousand dollars per month for both plans. If we were to accept the TAC renewal at eleven point five percent, that would be an increase in the total invoice of a hundred and three thousand dollars. You see where I'm getting that number in the yellow highlight? The alternative plan would drop the increase to nine point three percent, or eighty-three thousand dollars more per year. And then there's alternate two, which would be a six point eight-two percent increase, or a difference of sixty-one thousand. So we've bolded the differences, and there are no changes. So we went to TAC and asked if we could consider buying a higher deductible than five thousand dollars for our first plan. But they don't yet offer a higher deductible on that plan. But they do offer a higher deductible on the second plan we offer. So going from twenty-five hundred dollars to three thousand would be the option shown in alternate one. You see where it's bolded there? Just below that purple line, from twenty-five hundred to three thousand. And then, the last column would take your deductible from twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred.
Okay, so just make sure we're clearing this. Alternative one increases our deductible by five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Alternative two increases the deductible by one thousand dollars.
Correct.
In your out-of-pocket goes up as well.
From sixty-eight fifty to seventy-one fifty, or eighty-one fifty. And those also are bolded. Any other questions on this page? Then this is a continuation of those same four columns, these are not more options. We just couldn't fit it all on one page. So now, the purple line shows the portion that the county actually funds. So the yellow line told us our total invoice amounts. The purple line shows us the county's portion of the health coverage contribution we make. So currently, the county is funding eight hundred and six thousand dollars per year. If you accepted the renewal with no plan changes, the county would go ninety-two thousand more for eight ninety-eight total. Alternate one would be seventy-five thousand more, and alternate two, fifty-five thousand. The other items I'm showing below that purple line is that twelve hundred dollar per year contribution for the sixteen, I think I said sixteen, nineteen people that are in the HSA qualified plan. If there were no changes or shifts, that's nineteen thousand per year contribution into those bank accounts. In addition to making the health savings account contribution, we maintain a health reimbursement arrangement, which effectively is the way we have of distinguishing the amount of insurance we want to buy from TAC, but we want our employees to have lower deductibles. But we don't want to pay the high premiums to TAC for the privilege. So we self-insure a part of the deductible to buy it down for the employees to encounter less out-of-pocket. In each of the plans, the blue numbers that I have on this page illustrate the amounts that the county is funding on the back end of each of those deductibles, not only for employees, but for dependent coverage as well. You pay an administrator by the name of Benefit Buck's, and for purposes of just full transparency, I own Benefit Buck's and Brinson Benefits as well. And so you pay an administrator to review those claims, to make sure that there are appropriate reimbursements being made to employees. And your annualized claims are running at about twenty-one thousand, six sixty-eight. So if we were to contemplate alternate one and increasing the deductible in that second plan, then what we've done here with your health reimbursement arrangement is suggested that you probably want to offset that additional difference in deductible and increase your health reimbursement arrangement to twenty-seven fifty. Likewise, if you were to consider alternate two, then we might recommend that you increase the health reimbursement arrangement to thirty-two fifty.
Why are you going up the additional fifty dollars on this? In other words, on your alternate one, in the blue, you're twenty-two hundred dollars. If we go with alternate one, it's an additional five hundred dollar deductible, but instead of it being twenty-seven hundred, it's twenty-seven fifty, and likewise with alternate two.
Okay, so currently, in that second plan, we fund twenty-two fifty. So we just added five hundred to that. Does that make sense?
The twenty-two hundred judges for the HSA.
Right.
And that's the maximum?
That's the maximum we're talking about. Each line's HSA, one's PPO.
So we did just increase. Now, you don't have to increase by the five hundred. You could share it, you could split it, you could do nothing. You could just keep it as it is, and then the additional deductible would be an exposure of the patient. But this strategy has worked quite well, because we would pay significantly more than twenty-two thousand a year for the lower deductibles that your employees have, if we bought them from the insurance company.
While we're thinking about that, our Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're at almost two-hundred percent payout over what we're paying for the premium. That can't go on forever. They're eventually going to put us in the non-preferred status, and it's going to go up even higher from there. Do you get any information from them that we're getting close to the end of what we can do as far as premiums?
It's interesting. I feel that you, right now, compared to the renewals I'm seeing that just came out for my other government employers directly from Blue Cross outside of TAC, are significantly worse, significantly worse. So I feel like you are in the shield or the protection of TAC right now. And even though I don't love a double-digit renewal increase, your four-year average loss ratio under TAC is a hundred and twenty-eight percent.
And that can't go on forever. Even Blue Cross Blue Shield is going to say at some point, that's enough, you're going into the non-preferred pool.
Maybe.
And we'll start paying even more.
So TAC this year, their average health plan increase across their pool is seven point three percent. So you did receive slightly more than their average increase from, but still, you're right, compared to your claims, I don't have a lot I can do in the market, because you would be declined.
Right. And nobody wants to pick up a risk that is generating one hundred percent claims.
Any questions about this renewal? This is the hardest decision you have to make, for sure.
Well, alternate one, if we make the five hundred dollar deductible upgrade, then we're looking at an increase of nine point three percent over what we would have if we just stayed where we are.
Correct.
If we go with a one thousand dollar deductible, that takes us down to six point eight-two percent, just under seven percent. But we have to fund that additional deductible amount.
Yeah, so that actually increases that to actually more than what the original is. If we do the five hundred, and everybody meets that, it's a hundred and twenty-one, one twenty-nine. Or if we just stay like we were, it's a hundred and three, three fifty-six, because that's thirty-seven-five is what we'd have to come up with for the extra five hundred dollars for seventy-five PPO, for the HSA.
Where are you looking?
My number. I made notes.
He ran it as if everyone hit the deductible, which would be a very low odds proposition, typically, well, I've never had it happen.
Yeah, we're special.
Never say never. I will say, you are overachievers with your claims.
Hundred and eighty percent experience of whatever it was, hundred and ninety percent?
You have fifteen people.
Fifteen out of the seventy or so that are in the PPO.
And we're still not at the end of the claims year. That's when we start having our coverage year. That's when people start getting maximum.
Which one is going to be, if we have to pick up that additional five to a hundred or a thousand, are we going to be better off staying where we are, or going with that? I mean, that's just, I know you're rolling the dice, but...
But we have to fund it at some level.
Yeah, but you still, it's still just dollars.
Yeah, and to do the budget for twenty-three, we've got to decide, or twenty-two, we've got to decide how we're going to fund the additional five hundred dollars. Do we fund all of it? Do we fund half of it? What do we fund?
Well, and of course, Loretta sent me this, and so that's what I operated off of. And of course, I'm worst-case scenario kind of guy. But I don't see that we could throw it back on the employees, because that's a lot of money. But on the other hand, I don't want to hear no whining about not getting raises when we're having to go up nearly eleven and a half percent to cover their insurance, see, on that stuff, because we could pass that along to them, just like other entities do.
But you'd have to give them a raise.
No, no.
If you passed.
No, we wouldn't.
I mean, rightfully, it would be.
No, we wouldn't have to.
I mean...
Rightfully, wrongly, fiscally, we wouldn't have to. But I know, I know the situation, and we didn't give a raise this year, we didn't give a raise last year.
To most people, yeah.
So it's been, it'd be three years, you know, next year, twenty-three. But at some point, we've got to, we've got to come up with a better solution for insurance. It's over a million dollars if we do the renewal now this year.
I may be out of line here, but can I ask a question? Why does a county offer two different ones? Wouldn't the HSA be a better deal for the county in the long?
The younger, the younger, the younger ones, it's better, the younger employees, it's better to have the HSA. For those that are older, the PPO is better. And we only started the HSA about four years ago.
And not necessarily an age thing, I think it's a spectrum. Either you're really healthy, you don't go to the doctor much, or people who have chronic conditions, the HSA benefits. The people that go to the doctor some and probably have kids, it's not.
That's what it depends on, not age difference.
And I've never used it.
Well, I would just think, and I don't know, I don't really answer that, but I would think that HSA, which is what a lot of entities are going to, would save a lot more money.
Well, you're the supervisor for the most employees in the county. You are, as the SO and dispatch administrator, you supervise more than anybody else supervises. So it's a valid question for you, a valid concern for you.
Well, even as taxpayers, it's a valid question.
The one thing that is unusual, and we've talked about this with Loretta and Gailia, one thing you do that is very generous, but unusual, is you pay one hundred percent of both plans. And so, this is, it creates this unusual pattern. I typically find seventy-five or eighty percent of all participants in the lowest-cost plan. But because you're paying a hundred percent of both, you're not going to have that.
So you would see, in most organizations, you would see them more in HSA instead of PPO?
Correct.
They pay the difference. The employee pays the difference if they want to stay with the PPO plan, which is what several counties around us, I believe, do.
Correct.
They incentivize the HSA in those other counties.
That's right, that's right. Now, the challenge that often I hear about, though, with the HSA being offered in counties and cities, is that people don't feel prepared to come up with five thousand dollars all at one time. And so even though the out-of-pocket limit and the deductible are the same, it's five thousand, and you're done at five thousand, your other plan, they could, well, depending on which plan you choose, as high as seven, eight thousand dollars out-of-pocket. But with these co-pays, they feel like they can afford it as they access the care, and they feel like, hey, maybe I won't meet my out-of-pocket this year. So that's the difference, you know, you have people trying to evaluate, am I ready for five thousand if I have a need?
You're kind of thinking about more catastrophic coverage, not just monthly issues, going to the doctor for sort of type issues. Catastrophic coverage.
But what I love about what you all are doing in this HSA plan is, with that thousand dollars, I mean, if I have not used my thousand, and I'm saving it year after year after year, then in time, I should be ready, or adding to it to be prepared.
We've got better coverage than what the state does upstairs.
Oh, yeah. We've got better coverage than what the school does.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, for sure. Okay?
My deal is, and yeah, I did everybody. I mean, I'd work with the bottom line, and this is how many numbers. But we've got to evaluate that if we're going to pick up that thousand or five hundred, because I don't think there's any way we can pass it to the employee, is it going to be better off to stay where we're at, pay the higher premiums, or fund the reimbursement HRA account to that extent? Because somewhere, we've got to put money in something.
Yeah, exactly. Because you're going to have people that need that money to come out of HSA.
The downside, again, for the employee would be, they would have an initial cost, and then a reimbursement. The other side of that is, Jason and I, he said he has it, our initial cost is, what, twenty-seven hundred, twenty-eight hundred, because we have HSA, and y'all can't pay us back anymore than that. So our deductible is that out-of-pocket deductible.
Yes.
But you have the thousand-dollar HRA contribution, and then...
That's it. So we're at at least seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen.
Where everybody else is at right now, two fifty.
Right. You want to hear about the rest of the story?
Ms. Brinson, does it get better?
It does.
Okay, well, we're not better. Bring better, bring us better.
The third page, we don't have to necessarily review this in depth, but this is the payroll deduction changes if you adopt one of these alternate plans. So bear in mind, of course, you're paying a hundred percent of both of these plans, but the dependent cost would change proportionately. So with alternate one or the renewal, whichever the case may be. So you don't have anyone in full family right now, but on a monthly basis, somebody covering a spouse currently pays four sixty-nine eighty-eight, we go to five twenty-three ninety-two. Or in the buy-up plan, six sixteen to six eighty-seven. Does that make sense?
So for an employee only, currently, right now, let's say that fifteen hundred NGS, that's seven forty-nine ninety-six, that's what they're paying, that is going to go to eight thirty-six twenty if we just do a straight renewal, right?
Yeah.
Right here, so right now, it's at seven forty-nine ninety-six. If we do the renewal, then it goes to eight thirty-six twenty.
That's the county's portion, and then down here below the pink line is the employee's part.
So it's six sixteen sixty, or it goes up, it was six eighty-seven?
Correct, absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay, so an employee and spouse goes from six sixteen sixty to six eighty-seven fifty.
Per month. And then below that is per paycheck, based on twenty-four pay periods. So three oh eight to three forty-three. Okay?
So it'd be going up thirty-something dollars, twenty?
Yep. About thirty-five dollars, isn't it?
Thirty-five.
Per pay period.
And that's staying with the one we have right now?
Yeah, if you go to the next column, it'll be the thirty-five. Yeah, that's three thousand and thirty-five.
There is one pending question that we've posed to TAC that they have not yet been able to answer. After your ten-one renewal each year, they evaluate whether the pool as a whole will be paid a rebate. And then they decide, they don't really have a perfect formula for this, but they decide, in part based on tenure, your history, what portion of that could be yours. And you have had, good luck in prior years, getting a rebate, getting that check back. But at this point, we have no way to calculate what that is.
It's been significant in the past, and sometimes it's been, I don't want to say thirty thousand's insignificant, but it's been at the thirty thousand dollar reimbursement title, additional back to the county.
Yeah, that's real money.
Well, it is real money.
For sure.
But it's not as real as it has been in the past. It's been, they rebated, I'd call it a rebate, they rebated us back more, because the pool did better.
Yes.
But not at our experience ratio of a hundred and ninety, whatever it is, that's...
Despite your experience, though, you have been receiving rebates, so I don't feel like that's the basis of their decision, or you would never get money back.
Well, the board's made up by county elected officials, and they try to decide what's best for everybody across everybody in the pool.
That's good, that's the good part. Okay, we're going to forge ahead and talk about dental, this gets easier. So the dental plan is also through TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it is a two-point-six-nine percent increase. So we have ninety-five people participating, forty-five of those cover dependents, and the total change for the year would be one thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars at the two-point-six-nine percent. The county's portion would be seven oh seven, that's the number in green, for the year. And those are the two increases that you have to consider. We've gone ahead and put all the other pages of benefits in here, and I can do the short version, which is, everything can renew as is, with no changes to benefits or price, or we can take a look through these, if you want to review them.
It's vision, and it's D and D?
Mm-hmm, it's vision, it's life insurance with Mutual of Omaha, that's the employer-paid portion of ten thousand. And then the voluntary life, we have eighteen people that take voluntary life coverage for themselves, their spouse, or their children. And in addition to these benefit plans, you also have services such as the administration of your health reimbursement arrangement and your health savings account, bank accounts, telemedicine with My Telemedicine, and your EAP, your Employee Assistance Program with Alliance for Partners, and our advisory fee, none of which are changing. And so, those are just staying the same as your current budget. Now, I didn't bring all those pages, but I do have a book I can give you.
So there's no, there's no change in vision, no change in life, and no change in accidental death and dismemberment? And no change in the, what's the last one?
Voluntary life.
Voluntary life.
No change in telemedicine with My Telemedicine, no change in EAP, Health Savings Account, or Health Reimbursement Arrangement Administration. And I'm happy to attempt a motion for you all, maybe in two parts, if you want that. I realize this is a lot.
So ma'am, if you don't mind going back, on the HSA, we have nineteen with family, and then fifty-oh, we have seventy-five that's on that.
We have nineteen, none of them have full family, seventeen take employee only, one covers a spouse, and one covers children. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, yes, and then seventy-five on that PPO. Absolutely.
I was going, Sheriff, whatever's asking, I want to go, that's what, you know, there's seventy-five that likes the other one. Jason, I didn't know you'd see that or heard this.
Well, it's traditional, it's the way insurance has usually been all these years that I've been in it. But, you know, when I got to Eastland, they have the HSA, and it's blank, and they don't want the two different ones. Now, what they do is, is a five thousand dollar deductible, and they have a four thousand dollar benefit card that the cities will pay up to four thousand dollars per employee, but that doesn't roll over, that whatever doesn't get spent goes back in the pot. So, and they were able to save a lot of money. I liked it, I liked the HSA. Once I got used to it, at first, I was a little, you know, because you're just not used to that kind of stuff, but once you get used to it, it's a pretty cool thing, because once you hit that five thousand, or there, or whatever it is here, I don't remember.
It's five thousand here.
Once you hit that, you're a hundred percent. And anything that happens after that is a hundred percent, which I like. I don't want to have to worry about it later.
Once you made your annual deductible.
So would that save, I'm not trying to change everything up here, but would that, doing it that way where it doesn't keep continually rolling over, and whatever doesn't get spent on the several that aren't actually using the system to its full potential, that money comes back to y'all, would that end up saving some money?
Well, that just goes back into fund balance if we don't use it.
Well, it's.
Is that correct?
You're talking about the H, the health reimbursement?
Yes.
It, it's got its own count. We fund it every year.
Right.
A little bit, not, not, the original, we funded it for everybody. But then we kind of scaled down.
We've timed it over the past four years.
Yeah, but it does continually roll.
Now, the county does put two five hundred dollar deposits on the H S A card, and then will reimburse.
Right, no, I understand that. But what I was saying is that where if it didn't roll, maybe, maybe you contributed a little bit more to that, but it didn't roll. And what didn't get used by the majority, there's not, there's only a few that are actually using all of it, would come back to you and might could save you money that way. And you still have the insurance.
Yeah.
Seems like when we started this, there was only three or four that really liked it.
I think there were six of us to start with.
And that's eleven nineteen.
Yeah, so it, people are turning to it.
Well, and I think it's fear of the unknown. You know, with the P P O, you know, if you go to the doctor, you're going to pay the doctor forty dollars. But what, what they don't, a lot of them don't understand is with the H S A, when you go to the doctor, you're not paying them the full what the doctor would charge. You're paying them still the discounted rate that Blue Cross would pay them. So it's not like you're paying their whole hundred and fifty dollar fee out of pocket.
You're getting Blue Cross rates on it.
Right, and same thing with prescriptions. They're discounted to what Blue Cross would pay.
And where I was going with this is, I was trying to show you, the majority of us are using that. And if you tried to get them to switch, they're scared of it, and they ain't going to like it. That's where I was trying to go with it, too.
But if it saves the county a bunch of money doing it and making them switch, and, and it can be used for other things like radiocentures or something of that effect, then the blow might not be so bad. But once they got used to it, I think they'd like it.
Right.
Of course, I can't speak for everybody, but.
Well, it's, it's pretty fact-specific on the person, too. If you're somebody underlying causes, you operate your insurance differently than if you don't. And if you're, you know, if you're about to go out of the system, that's different, too.
But even with underlying cause, symptoms, and, and you use the system all the time, the H S A is better. Because it pays a hundred percent.
In the long run.
Once you make, once you make your deductible, yes.
Right.
Yeah, it has the lowest out of pocket, so lowest worst case, for sure.
Trying to tell them that and get them to understand, it's a different world.
I know.
Christina, what do you think? You're pretty quiet over there. From, from your perspective and your staff, what do you think about the difference between a, a higher H S A or staying with a, with a P P O? Does that make a difference in your career?
I have to give you a, Amber Ma, I think she was going to switch to H S A. I don't know that she ever did. And Tracy doesn't have insurance, she's part-time.
She's part-time, right.
Of course, it all doesn't matter if it doesn't save any money.
Right.
You know, that's the whole thing, you can tell us if it saves money or not.
I'm more, I'm more comfortable with P P O. And the fact that I'm sixty-three, that, you know, it makes a difference in what I, what I do. I, I just, the H S A just didn't make sense for me when I was fifty-eight, when we first started talking about this.
Well, you can't, you can't save enough in the amount of time you're looking forward to make any difference on the other end. And that's.
That's it.
Yeah, that's, that's the big deal.
But, you know, there's Christina, who's so much younger than me, but she's still a P P O. Because you're more comfortable with that. Yeah, sure.
But any plan we choose, if we go to the higher deductible, we have to guess, roll the dice, on how many people's going to meet that deductible, and if it's going to be financially feasible.
Well, and then there, there we come back to the idea in the budget. How many, how many of those additional dollars do we fund? If you've got nineteen people, do you fund all nineteen possibilities?
No, I'm not talking about nineteen, that stuff's saleable. I'm talking about the seventy-five on the P P O. Because the, what Jason and I have, and Loretta, I believe, have, is not going to change. I mean, you're, you're only going to be able to reimburse us the twenty-three hundred. We're still out of pocket to twenty-seven. Okay, that doesn't change. So what we're talking about is if you increase the deductible on the P P O side to three thousand or thirty-five hundred, and the county picks up that additional five hundred or a thousand, I mean, if, if you do the numbers on five hundred, if half, thirty-seven claimant, we're saving a thousand bucks by going to the thirty-five, to the three thousand dollar deductible. So, you know, that, that's my deal is, so if you did that and you did the numbers at three thousand, you wouldn't be saving no money at all.
So your idea, you're kind of thinking about right now, just a straight up renewal of what we have?
Yeah, i- i- is the straight, straight up renewal going to be the best for us? Or if we pick up, are we going to roll the dice that we're not going to have the fifteen or twenty people that need it? Or are we going to have more? Because if, if we have more, we actually will be losing money. We'll be going the wrong direction.
What are what's your take on it?
Um, well, and if you'll look, this is the H R A history. And Brinson has been pretty good at estimating the expected in our, in our several years of history.
And that first year was odd because we had no idea how many would get in. So we estimated, what if they all do, you know, so?
Right.
Yeah, we're pretty good guessers.
And now you've got some historical data to back it up with.
Is this, which plan is this?
That's both of your plans.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, combined into one bucket.
Okay. It, so, but that's with the estimated renewal? I mean, that's with our current plan, correct?
This is your current through June.
Okay.
Correct. And then I, we annualize that, so we look at it through ten, you know, through nine thirty. So that's the green number on your bigger worksheet, the twenty-one six sixty-eight. We take what you've done year to date and then annualize it. So either way, the difference is pretty small between the two plans. I think philosophically, the hard decision is, do you want to incent? People who are employee only right now are disproportionately taking the co-pay plan. Because there's no reason not to. It's free, and it's hard to beat free. So the only enticement you have is the twelve hundred dollars you're going to put into their health savings account. But at this point, they're not buying that as being benefit enough. So you could consider with your health reimbursement arrangement, not proportionately increasing it on that buy-up, on that richer plan. You could consider keeping it at twenty-two fifty. But I don't know that that's going to be noticeable to employees. I'm just trying to give you ideas.
Oh, it'll be noticeable.
Oh, well, okay.
Yeah, yeah. There's no question, it'll be noticeable. If we pass along five hundred dollars more cost to the employee, it'll be noticeable.
Yeah, exposure.
Yeah. And say, we went with a thousand.
And, you know, some of these fifteen claimants are probably what we call frequent flyers, which means they likely meet their out-of-pocket every year. But some are new. Some are going to be new each year. So when you make a decision, like if you have to make a hard decision, rule number one, I usually say, try to protect the paycheck as much as possible. Because that's where all eyes are on that. It's a very competitive landscape. And then secondly, you know, when you have to make a benefit design change, you want it to affect the least number of people. And my question for you, in just terms of fairness, if I am a higher utilizer, is it fair for me to pay more? In terms of plan design? Is it fair for my exposure to be proportionately more? And that's just a, it's a philosophical thing, but I always do encourage you to try to protect the paycheck. By maintaining at least one plan, that is free. And you've got that.
Yeah. Well, and the, the other side of that is, 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 we're sitting here and we're, we're guessing, you've got fifteen people that reached the deductible. Now, if we raise that deductible, how many people is it going to be?
Yeah.
And, and the other side of that is, is if we, i- i- is that going to lower it down? Probably not, but.
So it won't make much, the overall benefit will not be much.
No.
Compared to what the cost is going to be to the county, to the employees.
Yeah, when you look on the second page in your handout, I wish I had a different color, but the, there's two numbers towards the bottom of the page. Truly, the difference between your renewal with no changes and your renewal as an alternate one.
Hundred, one twenty-four, so what is it, seventeen thousand dollars difference?
Seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, seven, yeah.
Seventy-five hundred dollars difference.
Yeah. So that, that, that's my deal with it. Is, is it worth, is it worth the hassle to have to worry about trying to track another five hundred or a thousand dollars in budget for an unexpected expense for the county if we cover that? Or is it just worth going ahead and just renewing the way it is?
So if we renew the way it is, so it is on the cost of the employee, thirty-five dollars more, is that correct?
For a family.
For the family.
And that's, that's just on the medical.
Yeah.
Because there's a dental increase also.
Yeah. If you have your family on there, it's going to cost you money.
So if it was just employee, not family, how much would it be?
It's not, it's not going to cost them anything, it's going to cost us.
The county pays all that.
County pays. Except for you.
So.
Should they?
We have the most people on, as far as those that have dependent coverage, on employee and child, I believe. And if you look at the employee cost going from what they're paying right now to what the renewal is on the, the exact same plan, their cost is going from nine hundred eight dollars per month to one thousand twelve dollars. Oh, but that includes the employer cost, have to look at page two.
Yeah, there, oh, page three.
Page three, okay.
Below the pink line, they're going to go from two fifty-two to two eighty-one. Do you see that?
I don't see employee and child on here.
Oh, you know what?
Sixty-five forty-three to one eighty-four forty-five.
You're right, I didn't fix that page, I'm sorry. This, the one child, I didn't get that line, I think we perhaps did.
This says children, the red and say child, yes, that's what I'm going to do. But that'd give you an idea.
What is that, James?
Right here, where it says employee plus children, this is on page three.
Yes, sir.
Where it says one sixty-five forty-three currently, one sixty-five forty-three is what somebody was saying if we're on the P P O. And then if we renew it, it's going to go to one eighty-four forty-five. So it's about twenty dollars difference, nineteen dollars difference.
Per paycheck.
Per paycheck, yes. So we're losing thirty-eight dollars a month.
Just on medical.
Medical, and we're picking up the rest of it.
Yep.
And you can look at our part up there, where it says employee plus children, it goes from seven forty-nine ninety-six to eight thirty-six twenty. So that's eighty-six dollars increase for the county to pick up between those two numbers.
But coming out of the check, back down to what you said, would you say it would be?
The difference is going to be between currently, and this is just employee, children, not employee, child. It'll be a little bit different for employee, child. It's one sixty-five forty-three is currently what we're paying.
Yes, sir.
If we just renew it straight up like we are, it'd be one eighty-four forty-five.
That's what the employee is paying.
Yes, that's what the employee is paying.
That's just for the check.
Per paycheck.
Per paycheck. So that's thirty dollars difference, twenty-nine dollars difference per paycheck.
To me, that's where a lot of them will be not happy.
Well, the problem with that, Ronnie, is, is we're picking up.
Yeah, eighty dollars.
Yeah.
We're picking up eighty dollars right up there, the monthly.
Yeah, monthly.
Yeah. So you could say that we're funding half of it, you could say they're picking up forty, we're picking up forty, in that rate.
Right. Because it'll come up like Robert's saying, I'm going to.
Be prepared to, to tell them that it's going up for the county as well, and we're, we're picking it up so that they don't have to pick up as much, if that's what we do.
What do you think about that, Ms. Cady?
I'll comment.
Okay. Christina, you got any comment?
I have to cover my children anyway, so.
That's a good one.
And if they just have an employee and one child, it'll be probably a little less.
Yeah.
I would anticipate.
Yes, and I'll rerun those for you. So you've got them.
You can see the difference here between employee, children, and employee, child. Some difference, not just the whole one. Well, we need to move forward on it, so what is everybody's inclination at this point?
Yeah.
Stay where we are, go to alternative.
Well, I mean, I don't mind you picking, doing the higher deductible and picking it up. But I think we're going to roll the dice on that. Just because we don't know how many is going to heat it, hit it. I wouldn't do the thousand because I don't think it's feasible. Because you're, you're, you're cutting yourself in half with a thousand, for sure.
At the five hundred, it's only saving seventy-five hundred dollars principally.
Yeah. And, and that's, you know, and you're picking up, that, that doesn't count what we're picking up. That's saving the seventy-five hundred, that doesn't count what we're picking up as a county to subsidize that five hundred dollars. So if it's fifteen people, you just lost that seventy-five hundred.
No, it included that calculation. Mm-hmm, it did. That bottom line number factors in more exposure.
Okay.
And my thinking on even going with alternate two, I would hate to go to that much of a higher deductible, and it doesn't work for us, and then TAC won't let us go back. I mean, I'm not saying they wouldn't, but there's a possibility. So then we would be stuck with the thousand dollar deductible increase.
Well, when Loretta and I talked about this a week or ten days ago, I was thinking that the first alternative with the additional deductible looked better. But now, if you really run the numbers on it, I'm not sure that just the renewal isn't. It's almost dollar to dollar.
Dollar to dollar, yeah.
Close. And it, it causes the least amount of heartache for the employees.
Yeah. Because if, even if we're going to fund, fund the additional five hundred dollar deductible, they're going to be, whether they got it paid upfront or not, they're still stressed about an additional five hundred dollar out-of-pocket cost.
And we're going to be stressed if we have to go over what we project it might be.
Right, right, right.
So we'll be looking at fund balance for that. I, after hearing Ms. Brinson's presentation today, which is very good, thank you, this is great. This is a great presentation. I think it's, makes more sense to just renew. But that's just me.
You like that, James?
Yeah, that's what I'd do.
Yes, sir.
Still give them more options on this alternate one.
I hate it, it's going up eleven percent, but you could also tell any employee that wanted to go. And employees will say, why did it go up? And you could say, well, for the county-wide, it went up eleven percent. But your dollars are not, your expense is not going up eleven percent, it's quite a bit less than eleven percent. That'd be one way to sell it.
But we don't have any.
You're not going there, are you?
No, because she's talking about the family part of it. But I don't know how, how you can do that unless we just don't offer family insurance.
That's it.
You know, I mean, that's, that's.
And you have to.
Yeah.
You don't have to offer spouse, but that would be odd.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, that's the other thing, is it's a benefit we offer, you don't have to take it. You can go try to get it on your own.
Well, I recently got a letter from somebody that resigned, and they were pretty uncomplimentary about our pay rate. But our insurance coverage and other issues, our holiday and all that, it's worth something.
Yeah.
It's worth something.
Yeah.
It's worth something.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not paying as much per hour, but we sure have good insurance.
Yeah.
I've heard multiple state employees say county insurance is so much better.
Yeah. It, it, it is.
Our insurance is good, but I think a lot of the fuss is employee A gets a raise without any complications, and employee B, C, and D don't get the raise. I guess it's because their employer fights more for them, or because they can't get someone to fill that position if someone moved here, they gotta make it attractable, and it goes through. We battled that a couple of years ago.
But we've been giving across the board percentage raises when we give a raise typically. There've been a few instances where we've done something different, but the majority, the majority of our increases have been percentage across the board, so you can't say that you singled out one person.
You have.
Typically.
I mean, you have.
Every year, almost every year, except for last year.
No, technically, we did last year.
Did we do it last year, too?
Yeah, we just rolled it into this year. I mean, but technically, we did it last year.
Yeah, every year.
But you're.
Some of those employees make more than elected officials, or they will soon.
They do.
Yep.
There's one that makes, well, two that makes more than elected officials.
At least two that I know of.
Mhm, well, maybe three. Cause you had that one where the Senate bill was supposed to go into effect, but didn't.
Didn't, yeah.
But running scared.
Other ones, if you want to go to law school and get your law license, then you might, if that's where you're going with that, you might pick up an additional paycheck for being an attorney, licensed attorney, okay.
These people are not licensed, they have a certificate, a certificate.
Okay, so what do we want to do today?
I make the motion, stay with the.
Keep current employee.
Yes, sir.
And to renew Blue Cross Blue Shield dental with a two-point-six-nine percent increase.
No, just cut that increase out.
I think Ms. Brinson can do that.
Two-point-one, I'm sorry.
I tried, two-point-six-nine percent.
Six-nine percent.
And then the rest of it would stay the same, which is gonna be the life, voluntary life, extended death disrememberment.
Yes, and telemedicine, Alliance Work Partners EAP, HRA, and HSA administration with benefit bucks, and Brinson Benefits Consulting fee, no change since two thousand sixteen.
Is that okay with your motion?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely, cannot repeat that.
Um, the.
That was a lie.
AWP, did you find out how many people are actually using that?
I don't think they report on your size, we asked, and I'll verify that, but it is no charge.
No charge, it's included in the, the seven-fifty we're paying per employee for my telemedicine?
Uh, no, Alliance Work Partners is free, included with your TAC membership.
Oh, okay.
Which is separate.
Okay.
Now, oh, you're asking about telemedicine, including behavioral health, like then, no, I cannot get reporting on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and how much of that, of our per employee fee is for the mental health?
Uh, can I see that big book?
Mhm.
I'll answer it.
And I'm just questioning this because we have a mental health benefit with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and, and I had asked in a prior meeting.
So the frustrating thing about the telemedicine, we added zero-cost counseling support for the entire household a few years ago, let me just find it, through My Telemedicine. So that's called behavioral health. We pay two dollars per employee per month extra for that access, which I feel like in the pandemic made sense, but the problem with My Telemedicine is they will not report on how many people are using that benefit, so we're paying two dollars.
We don't know exactly.
So we don't know how many households are using it. So we know we have X, we have good usage with the regular My Telemedicine, primary care, we have good usage, I've got those reports here, but I cannot get reporting on behavioral health.
Call of HIPAA?
No, just because they're lazy.
Okay.
My opinion. They could surely report on it. So that could be something you wanna either carve out, and you're, you have a separate benefit through TAC called an Employee Assistance Program through Alliance Work Partners, and that gives somebody four, I believe four counseling, uh, sessions under that benefit. And then at that point, when they exhaust that benefit, then they would have to be taken back to your health plan. So if we save the two dollars times roughly a hundred people, you see what you're deciding on?
Per month.
Twenty-four hundred per year.
Twenty-four hundred per year.
And that was, that was just my question about the utilization, are we paying for something that's not even being used, that's already included?
We don't know.
That's a good question, sound like we're paying twenty-four hundred bucks for nothing.
But if they utilize the one that's offered through TAC, you only get four sessions, if you need a whole year's worth, then it'd fall back on your medical side.
I see.
Which it could cost you more than twenty-four hundred a year.
Right.
Right, that'd be fifty bucks per visit, or your deductible, whichever plan you're in.
Well, I say that we, we've got a motion before us that doesn't include funding the mental health, additional mental health, do we want to move forward with that, or do we want to add the mental health part into that, spend the twenty-four?
I just separate judge.
Oh, did you put that in? Did you mention that already?
I did.
No.
So you have it now.
I can't.
We're gonna have to.
Can I separate that one into a different motion for you?
Let's, let's use a motion that we have now.
Cause we jumped onto something else, okay, so I have a motion by Wiltson to renew the current plan and renew dental with TAC at two-point-six-nine percent.
Correct.
And telemedicine.
Let's leave that separate.
HRA?
Yes.
HSA?
Yes.
And that's where?
EAP, the vision plan, term life and AD and D with Mutual of Omaha, voluntary life with Mutual of Omaha, and Brinson Benefits Advisory Fee.
Okay, and ADA and voluntary law.
Mhm, I'm sorry, I went too fast.
With Mutual.
Mhm.
And?
Brinson Benefits Advisory Fee, thirty-seven thousand nine ninety-two, unchanged since two thousand sixteen.
Thirty-seven what?
Nine ninety-two, nine ninety-two.
You just thought she was getting out of these long-born means, didn't you?
Yeah, give me the eight hundred number for the mental health.
Are you good with that?
I'm putting in the phone right now.
Mhm.
So we have a motion, do we?
Can I complete one sentence?
Yes.
And authorize judge to sign all related documents.
We have a motion then before us, did we ever get a second on that, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rain seconds it. Any further discussion on his first motion about our healthcare coverage and employee healthcare coverage and ancillaries, anything? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Okay, now then, we need to discuss.
My telemedicine, so we have, we pay seven-fifty total, two dollars of that is the, is the behavioral health, it gives access to the whole household, unlimited counseling support services at zero cost. When a patient engages with a counselor, they will, once they've done the assessment, they will engage with that same counselor every time, so it's a little different than calling a primary care physician, cause you might get a different one each time. The challenge we have is we're paying twenty-four hundred dollars a year for that additional behavioral health service.
We're not, we don't know what we're feeding.
We have no idea how many people may be using it.
We could carve that off and leave the telehealth.
Correct.
Which I think telehealth works pretty well myself, do y'all use it?
I don't like it.
Do you use it?
No.
They've changed drastically within the last two years.
You use it?
Have they?
I think Linda, you use it?
They always tell you, go see your primary care physician.
Need to ask for Dr. Lee.
Dr. Lee?
You use telehealth?
Can you request?
No.
I've, I've gone to the doctor.
That's good to know.
You're too healthy.
I'm, I'm fairly healthy.
My only concern about doing that, not knowing if somebody's using it, you're fixing to wipe somebody's counselor off the face, and the next time they call, they can't get nobody. That's my only concern.
Why can we not get the feedback on our usage?
I mean, and I wouldn't want that thought, that one person, one person called to have something and not, nobody was there.
The reason why is because they outsource the counseling piece to a separate business entity, so it's not part of the primary care, and they haven't bridged the technology gap on getting that data.
Is there any chance that might happen?
Yes.
Okay.
I know they're working on it.
Okay.
That, that's my only deal.
So next year, when we're in here doing the same thing, we might have feedback on the MH component.
Right, well, we might move vendors so we can get it.
Yeah.
Cause they almost all have the same providers.
Well, and you just don't know, I mean, that is open for the whole families, and every, you just don't know who might be using that service right now, and I, and I wouldn't wanna roll the dice.
You could be selling somebody's life.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna roll the dice.
All right, do we want to make a motion then to leave?
I'll, I'll make the motion to leave that exactly like it is.
Okay, so.
The My Telemedicine exactly like it is.
So Dawn, if you'll read that in, so.
I will.
Robert's motion is.
So the motion would be to renew My Telemedicine at the current, uh, pricing, there's no change, including behavioral health support, and authorize judge to sign all related documents. Behavioral health.
Health. Your motion, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, it's unanimous, okay.
Did we do anything?
We did. I know it's complicated, thank you all so much.
Well, thank you for bringing it to us.
These are hard decisions.
A very understandable, uh, method for us to grasp what we need to know.
My pleasure, thank you all.
Good bet.
I'll remember Dr. Lee.
I know, Dr. Lee.
This what we're gonna be signing and renewing here later?
Um, yes, thank you, Dawn, I know that was a tough day for you.
No.
Um, yes, I did not, because you see, there's a lot of blanks that we have to calculate, we did not fill it in because I didn't know what was going to happen.
What plans, remember?
So if you're going to be here after lunch, we have to get this to TAC today, so we'll put numbers in and bring it back and let you sign.
Sounds good.
Okay, give one to you for sure.
Sounds good. Okay, you may need a break, or keep trucking?
No, keep trucking, I'll take my break in a minute.
Uh, number eleven, personnel matters, Ms. Key.
Yes, there is a personnel report, and the time period for that report is June twenty-fifth through seven, not, or July ninth. During that time period, there were three new hires, a deputy sheriff, a security deputy, and a jailer. There were also four employment terminations, one deputy clerk, and that is a deputy district clerk, a security deputy, a jail guard, and a dispatcher.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments, and does anybody else have anything else to add to this personnel report that Loretta's just given us? All right, with that then, can we have a motion to accept the personnel report as delivered?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, and it is unanimous. Okay, that takes us to twelve, motion to turn in property matters, twelve A is certification of additional revenue.
Yes, there are several certifications. The first one is four hundred dollars received from Social Security Administration, it was deposited into general fund checking and credited to the SSA incentive pay revenue line, I am not asking for an expenditure increase. The next one is seven hundred thirty-seven dollars eighty-five cents received from Texas Association of County's Judicial Education Grant Fund, it was deposited into general fund checking, credited to combined refunds reimbursements revenue line, this was reimbursement for the County District Clerks Association Summer Conference, I'm asking the court to increase the county clerk's travel expense expenditure line by the same seven thirty-seven The next one is three hundred seventy-two dollars received from the Texas District and County Attorneys Association, this deposited into general fund, credited to the combined refunds reimbursements revenue line, this was the Texas District and County Attorney's electorate, elected prosecutor conference travel reimbursement, I'm asking the court to increase the DA's travel expense by the same amount. Next is fifty-five dollars received from Texas Association of County's Controlled Disbursements, deposited into general fund checking, credited to the combined refunds reimbursements revenue line, uh, this is a refund of the two thousand twenty-one legislative conference, I'm asking the court to increase the auditor's seminar conference expense by the same fifty-five Then three dollars received from Christina Doddrell, it was deposited into general fund, credited to combined refunds reimbursements, um, and it was to reimburse copies, I'm asking the court to increase the treasurer's copier supplies budget by three dollars.
I'm pretty wrong on that one.
Um, then seven dollars nine cents received from Lynn Branley, it was deposited into general fund and credited to the combined refunds reimbursement revenue line, it was reimbursement of sales tax, uh, from errands for a dryer rental, I'm asking the court to increase the operating supplies budget for the jail by the same seven dollars and nine cents.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments about certification of additional revenue and expenditure? Can we have a motion then to approve the certification of additional revenue and the expenditure thereof, as mentioned?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, it is unanimous.
Do you wanna keep that till next?
Yes, thank you. Hard to get all those signed here, it's on you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right, twelve B is emergency amendments.
No emergency amendments, Judge.
Okay, twelve C is amendment changes by fund.
Um, there are amendment changes.
You might as well come up, Christine.
There are two pages, you'll see that several of them are certifications of additional revenue from previous courts, and there are adjustments within budgets, and I don't know that I need to.
Begin start.
Uh, you'll see on the last, at the bottom of the first page and the second page, there are a lot of adjustments in adult probation, and that's because David Cherry did a budget adjustment with CJAD, and I'm just adjusting to what the state.
They're saying four, too.
Yeah, I'm telling you, she ain't even begin to say them.
Four had a lot of adjustments, didn't she, Rhett?
She fixing to get a whole list of them. She fixing to get a whole list of them. Just on an email, she can't see the cheers.
Any question or comments on the proposed amendment changes by fund?
No, sir, gentlemen.
Do we have a motion then to approve and make those amendment changes by fund?
Second. I guess you first. No, I'm making the motion.
Motion made and thinks seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Uh, that's yours, aye as well.
Are you hearing things?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty minutes, Judge, you better speed it up.
Hold on.
That's what I said.
All right, 12B, report of financial condition.
Yes, there are two reports. The first one is our May monthly report. And the first section of that report is the combined statement of cash position as of the end of May, and all of these are general ledger balance, balances, uh, general fund checking, three million eight hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred eighty dollars seventy cents. Texpool, three hundred thirty-one thousand forty-nine dollars thirty-eight cents. First Financial Bank CDs, eight hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars. Texas Bank, one CD, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Schertz Bank, one CD, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Prosperity Bank, one CD, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Texpool Prime, five hundred twenty-one thousand eighty-eight dollars eighty-six cents. Texas Class, five hundred ten thousand eighteen dollars forty-seven cents. Total general ledger balance for funds on deposit with, for general funds, six million eight hundred nine thousand dollars forty-one cents. The next section is road and bridge, checking, six hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred thirteen dollars thirty-nine cents. The rest of the funds are listed. And then on page four, there is one line with the totals. Total general ledger balance, all funds on deposit for the county as of the end of May, eleven million three hundred fifty thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars two cents. Then there are two totals pages. The next section is the combined statement of revenue and expense for May showing the May month-to-date revenue and expense, excuse me, and then the year-to-date revenue and expense by fund, and as of the end of May, general fund revenues, eight million four hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars seventy-eight cents. Expenditures, six million two hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred six dollars twenty-five cents. Road and bridge revenue, one million four hundred forty thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars twenty-eight cents. Expenditures, nine hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars eighty-six cents. And the rest of the funds are listed. There are three pages of that report. And the last section of those reports is the combined statement of cash receipts and disbursements, showing the beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash disbursements, and ending cash balances by fund and account type. There are six pages of that report. And next is the management report from First Financial Bank, showing the securities for our funds on deposit, county funds. On page two, there is a totals line. Far right column, pledged market value of all securities is ten million five hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars twelve cents. And then Prosperity Bank has a pledged security listing, and the market value of securities they're offering for, or they're securing our funds with is two hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars. The next report that says general ledger May, it's two pages, is the interest, the current column, is this year as of the end of May, we have earned thirteen thousand ninety-nine dollars seventy-one cents. The same time last year, we had earned eighty-three thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars seventy-five cents.
Seventy thousand less.
Mm-hmm. The next report is the scheduled lease payments as, and this is also the May report, so it's still showing for general fund, the one lease purchase agreement for election equipment, which has been, the last payment was made, and then the three lease purchase agreements for motor graders, for road and bridge.
Then you'll see the spreadsheet for the month-ending bank account totals as of May 2021. As of May 31st, 2021, the amount of cash and other assets in the custody of my office was nine million eight hundred seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and five cents.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments on this report for the month of May? Okay, can we have a motion to accept that and also to sign the affidavit as prepared by Ms. Doddrell?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we're going to report of financial condition as of July the 6th.
Yes, and these are general ledger balances as of July 6th. Let me just compare and I'll just go over differences. Um, at that time, general fund checking, three million two hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars fifteen, nineteen cents. And the rest of the accounts in general fund stayed the same, so the total general fund ledger balance, six million two hundred thirty-seven thousand thirty-one dollars thirty cents. Road and bridge checking, five hundred sixty thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-eight cents. The other funds are listed on the next three pages. On page four, there is one total line. Total general ledger, all funds on deposit for Eastland County as of July 6th, twelve million four hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars. Then there are two total pages. And next is the combined statement of revenue and expense, also showing July revenue and expense as of July 6th. The year-to-date revenue and expenses listed at that time, general fund revenues were eight million five hundred seventy-two thousand twenty-eight dollars eighty-seven cents. Expenditures were six million nine hundred thirty thousand eighty-three dollars eighty cents. Road and bridge revenues, one million four hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars two cents, and expenditures, one million one hundred forty-two thousand three hundred twenty dollars twenty-one cents. And there are three pages of that report. On page three, it's showing the total revenue and expense for all funds. Next is the combined statement of cash receipts and disbursements, also showing July beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash disbursements, and the July 6th ending cash balance by fund and account type. And we are in adequate revenue and expense and also cash position. And that's all for this report.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments on this report as of July the 6th? All right, maybe we have a motion to accept that report as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, then we go to 12E, the investment report.
It is the last page of the May report, showing our investments, um, beginning market value as of May 1st, and ending market value. There were no deposits or withdrawals during May, and the interest earned on the different accounts. And you'll see the First Financial Bank CDs, the three First Financial Bank CDs, the certificates of deposit with Schertz Bank, Texas Bank, and Prosperity Bank, Texas Class, Texpool Prime, and Texpool. And the collateral on the cash balances and bank certificates of deposits was adequate for the period, and this report is made in accordance with provisions of Government Code 2256, the Public Funds Investment Act. The investments held in the Eastland County portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and with the county's investment policies and strategies, and it is signed by both Christina Doddrell and myself.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments about the investment report for the month of May? Hearing none, why we have a motion to accept that report as presented? Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Okay, that takes us to 12F, which is financial reports, departmental reports. I've got the sheriff's report of fines and fees admitted to the treasurer. I've got the constable precinct one report. Uh, let's see. What else? Kathy, what else do you have over there on your side?
I have constable precinct two. I have the ECAD. I have the JP 1, 2, and 4. I have tax collector, several DMVs, Agrolab, two of those reports, county clerk, district clerk. And then I have the sheriff's monthly report of like the calls, the cases filed with the DA's, and that's all I have.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions or comments? Sheriff Wager, do you want to tell us anything about the monthly report, the call report, or?
Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is the same stuff that I put out to the public, but I want you all to have a copy as well.
I appreciate you doing this too. This is good.
We've been, you know, this is not all we're doing. We, this is just some of the highlights as I think about it. But, uh, we've been kicking butt over there, I think, but, uh, we've got a ton of training going on. That's kind of what's going on a lot in the background. All of our deputies are now civil process certified. They're all courthouse security certified. They're all, uh, they all have their mandates on the body cameras and their eyewitness stuff. We went through all the TCO mandates and a bunch of them didn't have it. They're all lined out. All the jailers are, are working on their, um, training as well. We're all going up and, or trying to get everybody bought in on their next level certifications and, and just really training. We've been doing some in-person training. We've got several instructors that work for the department now. Um, we've just really been training a lot. Um, and, uh, as mentioned earlier, we've hired three deputies, Ray Russell's back as courtroom, courthouse deputy, y'all seen him? And, uh, Daniel Piper, uh, he's, he comes to us from Clyde. He'd worked in Eastland before. And a new guy, um, named, uh, I'm having a total mind blank, I'm sorry.
Woody?
Yes, Woody. We call him Woody. His, his real name I don't know. And so, um, he, uh, he's, he's brand new, and what's, what's cool about that is, I don't, I can't remember a time Robert made, but, um, where they have done a full field training, uh, program. He's new. Uh, most, most everybody, when they go to the sheriff's department, they've had experience or coming from somewhere else. This guy's brand new. We're going to do a full-blown field training on him. Uh, it'll last three or four months, but, uh, it'll be cool. It'll be neat. It's something they haven't done, and, and we've all trained officers at other places before, so it's not, it's not unusual for us. It's just never been done here, so, um, it'll be.
They only let me do it one time, Jason, and then they let me do it one more.
Try the trainer.
Yeah.
So anyway, uh, that's, that's a lot of what we're doing, working with a lot of other departments on stuff. We're, we've been, uh, reaching out to all the entities in, in the county and, and going and backing people up and assisting them and helping them with cases, and they're helping us. And it's all, it's all really kind of coming back together, um, where we're all working together, uh, for, for the same good, same, same, uh, same goals. Uh, I think we're all on the same page on a bunch of stuff, and it's really, it's really helped out a bunch. So, uh, the rest of it, you can see, uh, you know, we opened up the jail, uh, back to the jail ministries and, and letting people get ministered to. Uh, we're trying to, uh, Open Door reached out, and we're trying to work a deal together with Open Door for some parenting classes to come in for men and women, not just clients, not just their clients, but for everybody. Uh, and, and maybe they'll get some ministry out of that as well. Um, the phone system's been a huge headache, um, but it's coming along. They, they're, they're working it out. I don't, I don't have complaints on the response. Um, we are, we just had the generator wired in, um, to the switches, to the AT&amp;T switches, uh, because if, if our power goes down, we were, would be without phones. So we, we had the phone switch, all the new stuff tied into the generator, and we also put battery backups on those switch boxes as well. That'll help in the interim between power going down and the generator kicking on. It'll, it'll keep everything alive. Um, other than that, trying to, you know, just trying to get with this century over there, starting to, starting to put a lot of, uh, stuff on computers, scanning stuff in, uh, backing up stuff, uh, trying to get as much centralized as we can in electronic format as we can. Y'all got any questions about what's going on?
Questions? You acting it okay?
I am. I'm, uh, I'm still getting my feet up under me, and there's, there's still a lot to do, and, and I've still got a lot going on, um, but, uh, but it's smoothing out, I think, and people are, are buying in and seeing what it is I'm wanting to, to get done and bringing everybody back together, and, and, uh, and I think it's working. And, uh, so there's, there's a few more months ahead of, of a lot.
Right.
But, uh, but once we get past this hump, I think that it's going to smooth out a lot and, and run a lot more efficiently and, and better.
You're doing a good job, Jason.
Thank you.
Like I called you last week about you guys, they're doing a good job too.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, uh, with that and the reports that Kathy named off a minute ago, do we have a motion to accept those reports in as presented?
Motion accepted.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
Colby Jackson is the name, by the way.
Colby Jackson. I like Woody, though.
I was gonna, I knew you, but you were stuck with Woody. Judge, may we take a five-minute break before we go into Bill's claims accounts and budget?
Do we have a motion for a short recess?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for a short recess. All in favor, say aye. And we're in recess.
Gentlemen, with the ball, you're off by left.
No, we'll get to your budget.
Thank you, Jason.
So have a great day.
Thank you.